You ready to roll up? Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the City Council of Universal City, Texas. It is June 20th, 2023. I'll call this meeting Jordan now at 6:30 PM and call for project.
Mayor Corbin Goldsby.
Here. Okay. Just double checking, I made sure we don't have too much reverberation on the line.
Councilmember Buck.
Here.
Councilmember Bowman.
Here.
Councilmember Patrick.
Here.
Councilmember Marion.
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Here.
Former president, we shall proceed in the case of the street. We're going to be given by councilmember Buck, and I'll do this in the place of that word. So everyone, please stand. Heavenly Father, we stand before you tonight, your humble servants and servants to the residents of our great city, asking for your guidance and wisdom in all we do. Guide our discussions this evening to ensure understanding of the issues before us and help us make the best decisions on behalf of those whose trust has been placed in us. We thank you for the blessings you have bestowed upon us and upon the residents we represent. As we contemplate and direct the affairs of our city, we ask for your will to be done. Show us your purposes, enlighten us that we may know how you desire for us to accomplish our tasks. We set the goals, but you guide our steps as we seek to reach our ultimate destination. Grant us your vision and wisdom that we might do your bidding. Finally, we humbly ask for your watchful eye over all in our community with special care to our first responders, children playing ball on summer break, and our men and women bravely and selflessly serving our nation around the world. We ask all these things in your name, Heavenly Father. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. On behalf of the Texas side, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state under God, one and individual.
Well, good, thank you, everyone, for coming this evening in a hundred and two or three degree, I'm sure whatever it is, but I think it's a piece to it. I'm reading it fairly well. We have very few attended the CDs, so I'm glad to show on here. We have a couple of special things that I would like to do at the beginning of our presentation this evening. As they say, I'd like to recognize members of staff or individuals who have done things that I consider special. And one of the, one of the, I'm sure you're right now, is a very short little video here. And then I'll introduce our director of golf for special recognition. So take a look and watch this. This last week was the very first youth golf camp. So I take that note. Okay, short and sweet. Just wanted to be able to see that there are three other camps scheduled for this summer as well. I had two of my grandkids in last week's camp. And I think you saw towards the end there, it said, let's heal. And I think that's really important. And that's why I want to recognize the family this evening. And I'd like Sal Garcia to come up because what they have done to help our youth in golf is very fantastic. So Sal, would you please take a look?
Well, good evening. My name is Sal Garcia. I'm the director of golf at El Pito's. I've been fortunate enough to run all the junior camps since 2007, and it's amazing. I love it. The same, it's summer, the best time of the year for me. A couple of years ago, the Kill family and also Les Ford here came to me and wanted to start a memorial fund to help with the funds for the junior camp. So I've been able to purchase equipment for kids at needles, scholarships for kids that don't have the money to do so. And this year is pretty awesome. They are covering half the fee of every kid that joins this year, and it's just truly amazing. And I can't thank the family enough. And Jean's been fantastic. Julie and Mike have been awesome. Thank y'all very much for every day and all y'all's support. Thank you very much.
If you need the money, that will keep it funded, and that's another contribution for this season.
Thank you very much.
That's why I wanted you to hear about this, because this family has, I mean, they're basically sponsoring half, half of the expense for every one of these children that are participating in this camp this summer. And it is just wonderful. My daughter-in-law came up, I had two sons, two grandsons in camp last week, and she came up to me after she signed up, she said, it only cost me half. Fantastic. Thank you for what you do. And you're helping with terrific. Another side statement, very interesting. Last Thursday night, there at the golf course, there was the happy hour. There was a scramble, which just happens every Thursday night. Guys get together, the gals get together, and they play a nine-hole scramble. And there was also a wedding, an inception. So you can imagine what the parking lot was like. So after the scramble was finished, you know what we did? Sal worked it out with the guys, the people at the Marriott Tom Suites, and all the golfers went to the Marriott Tom Suites, and had their happy hour. And that was. So what a wonderful relationship we have here at this organization. So Sal, great job. I want to tell the other story about the part of the elevator. And that was another story. Anyway, I wanted to make sure you guys realize that some people do above and beyond, and that's what happened with the Kill family. We're so proud of you guys for what you do and how you support our community. We have a lot of very, very happy kids and moms and dads. So I know you got to leave in a few minutes, but I wanted to make sure we recognize you for what you've done.
Thank you.
And you, our pleasure. Our pleasure. Okay, all right. Let's see, I think we move on up to the minutes of our previous conversation. That's tab number eight. Consider the minutes of the Tuesday, May 16th, 2023 City Council Regular Meeting and the Tuesday, June 6th, 2023 City Council Regular Meeting. Group, 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 Mr. Mayor. I think we're meeting with councilmember Buck.
Sir.
Second, my councilmember Goldsby. Our councilmember Kemp, please. Any discussion, anyone? All right, let's go to the regular days.
Councilmember Buck.
Aye.
Mayor Corbin Goldsby.
Aye.
Councilmember Bowman.
Aye.
Councilmember Patrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Marion.
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Aye.
That was Texas. We shall proceed. Next item, CD assist, as we heard, it is an opportunity provided to assist the address council on issues of concern. It's a bumper loan, and you can see there's no special discussion related to that. Actually, no actually taken, but we really, really appreciate people coming directly involved with the community, and so this is our opportunity to address council. And we've had, seeing we've had three people that have signed up so far, and I'll call you up in order to make you sign. First, that's Ms. Kim Eichelhart. Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Members of the council, my name is Kim Eichelhart. I live at the 736 Garden Road Drive. And I am asking you to seek verification of the exact factories of the East Aviation Masterplan. For Elton Master Plan, Appendix A and Appendix B, there are multiple maps. There are two different versions of the area's boundaries. I emailed you a copy of page 10 of the August 2020 presentation. The area identified in pink within Eastern Boundary of Cochran and Western Boundary of Houston is that area identified on pages 1 and 7 of the presentation as being the planning area. It is also identified on multiple pages throughout Appendix B, open to which I have provided you, as it is now publicly available on our C website. Appendix B contains the study area background, the market analysis, and the land use existing conditions. That is the rationale behind the planning. Please note on page 10 the highlighted comment that this master plan reflects an expanded area showing recommended uses transitioning out of the study area. While this seems to imply that the area is not a part of the actual study area, the map identifies the East Aviation PD boundary as the area marked in yellow on the attachment I sent you, with one block wider boundaries of Trudy to the east and Travis to the west, rather than the area marked in pink, including the cemetery located at the DFW on West Aviation. This expanded area map does not appear whatsoever in Appendix B. It is, however, a primary map utilized in the public presentation in August 2020. Inasmuch as Appendix B is the research we relied upon in explaining the need for the creation of the Aviation District Plan, and it apparently excludes the expanded area identified by the yellow border, I believe there is no documented research to justify the inclusion of said area. The property owner in the expanded area deserves to know if they are indeed in the Aviation District. I am asking you tonight to seek an answer to this question, and if the answer from staff is that Trudy and Travis are in back to east and west boundaries respectively, I am then requesting that an agenda iron be set to further discuss this matter. Thank you.
All right, may I say there was a time to see with Ms. Linda Sepsen.
I'm here, members of the council, and the Sepsens on Trudy Lane. I would like to address the request to change the zoning, the occupancy for the project on Pizzin' Bar. I recommend it from the, or the agenda from the ten years old, or, from what I understand is that the owner wants to use these units to be short-term rentals, three to four months, targeted at pilots that are in training at Randall Air Force Base. I'm very concerned about that. If there's a trend all the way around Randall, whether it's at Shurks and in Ciblo and in Converse, where more and more units and homes are being converted to short-term rentals, and it is a big problem. I have a friend who lives in Shurks, behind the back gate, and her girlfriend alone, there are four homes and now short-term rentals. They have them non-stop problems because the pilots, they're not coming from their families. They don't give a three to four month. A lot of them, they will double, triple up in a home, whatever the number of victims are, and they're doing problems with parking and partying. I love the military, I'm an Air Force veteran, I love the airplanes, the sound of freedom. We're a military town, but to put short-term rentals in an area that's so close to residential area, I'm very concerned with that. I'm also concerned that they've located either in or close to the aviation project because I'm a big fan of the aviation project. I wanted to work, but to have that project work, you have to give it pedestrian traffic, it has to be safe, you have to have a sense of community. When you have transient population, but just there for a few months, constantly bonded to the area, I am very concerned about how that's going to affect the whole atmosphere of the aviation project. Now, what I want to ask you, I know that you're not, this can be discussing whether or not it can be short-term. I know the zoning allows that, but you're asking to allow them to have more units. So what I'm asking you is, if it's the intention of the owner, that this is short-term leasing, three, four months, please go now. Now, if the owner is willing to weekly commit, that it's going to be either long-term leasing, a month, 15 months, 18, I'm sorry, 12, 15 months, or even to be sold individual ownership, that's great. I think that enhances what we're trying to do in the aviation project, but to have short-term rentals down there, we have townhomes and condos we want to put down there, that's the hope, right? Who's going to buy a condo next to a short-term rental? We had these problems years ago, and everybody was trying to do Airbnb, so we all saw how that turned out. Well, now the trend is for short-term rentals. I'm just asking, please do not put that, that close to residential. It's in my precinct, it's close to where I live, and everybody I know who lives down there, they are not happy about having that type of rental that close to where they all live. Thank you very much.
Amen. Appreciate it. Okay, last individual signed up this evening is Mr. Denise Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Denise Thomas. I'm the HOA person for the Ponto area. And last week, I contacted the City Council and all the municipal committees, who all very helpful in providing information regarding a lot. It sits in front of our subdivision on City House. The owner did not pay the grass, it was a hydisor, and they looked at it and thought that it wasn't, according to the current law, causing problems where they did, you know, force the owners to cut the plant. It was a hydisor, and we have our community back there in Inland. And we really want the property taken care of, because it's bad, you know, your taxes, and, you know, we've been asking some kind of consideration to look at what can be done. I understand there's a law that may be pending, a law that does not limit the height of the grass. So what I'm asking is for the management council to look at their law and maybe, you know, put some kind of standard or limit on how tall that grass can grow, because right now there's weeds, I'll have weeds in there, there's small trees growing up, and before you know it, it's like a, you know, a forest over there, and it's just not good for our homes. So our community would like it cut, and if there's anything that needs a loss, support or anything to change the law, anything that we can do, we'll be here to support City Council. Change the rules, change the law as early as we can require. And that's what I'm here for.
Good. Thank you very much. Appreciate your input. Okay, those are the only individuals that signed up to CD to address council. Would anybody like to that didn't get a chance to fill out? Please come up and give us your name and address to the record.
Good evening. I'm Lori Penn. I'm 114 Fox Club here in Universal City. I wasn't going to say anything, but you started talking about going above and beyond when Sal was here. And I really was lucky one time, I was up at the golf course at his banquet when he was sending his kids off. And we were all almost in tears because he's not just doing golf, he's doing life lessons. He's teaching these kids how to behave and how to be polite, and what they came out of it was just amazing. Regina goes above and beyond. Our events have been blown out of the water. Like you were talking about at the golf course, we had three events going on, we had the luau. It was outside, it was still steaming a moment. Now we're getting ready to have a big one, boat town on Thursday night, and they're worried that there's going to be too many people. Gee, what a bad problem to have. But we're bringing people in, they're seeing the golf course, they're seeing what kind of events that are put on for this, for this city, and they love our city. So it's a bad problem, but it's going to have to grow. We have had the most amazing new restaurants come in. We tried to hit them all, and our EDC has done a fantastic job working, bringing in these new people, restaurants. Everyone says, oh, no, not another bake shop, not another this. We've got really good restaurants now. We're really becoming restaurant bro. I just want everyone to know that now that we have a live stream on our city page, there's an awful lot of good that goes on in the city. We have a lot of residents that love living here and love what you're doing and love the things that are happening, and we really want to encourage this kind of movement, too. We have to hear it all, but that's why I'm here, is because I want you to hear the other side, too. The residents, the ones that I talked to, haven't had a lot of complaints. Everyone has their niche, and that's great, but I want everyone represented. I want everyone heard, and I just thank you that our residents go and our employees go above and beyond, and I'm really proud of it. And you all do, too. So thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
From the island, the University of San Diego. Well, no, maybe nobody knows me, but my name is Elviedo Bienvenido Plato La Hoya. I'm the union and the family. I fly from Puerto Rico to Texas. In 2015, I opened my dream in Universal City, and I bring the community the Caribbean food, the first restaurant Caribbean food in town. It's the name is Edin concrete oil. I've been here for 2016. I'm working hard for my dream. I bring the best thing, the food, we make it with love. The first thing we do, I'm not doing this for money, I do it with love. I bring the new in my place. I will go for the effort, recognize it for the military. I'm nervous. This is my first time. Okay. I bring the K5 neighborhood, too, in Universal City. So I've been just working for my dream. I'm doing the hard work. I bring the best food. The only Caribbean food, authentic, we have the city, is mine. It's Edin concrete oil, Caribbean food. It, this is like a blessing for the city, you know? You know how many cities want to be a five-star restaurant like that for a city? Because although I'm making my restaurant, I'm making so anybody can go. No problem, you bring jewelry, or sandal, or no glow, anybody can enjoy their food. I bring, the Caribbean lost the light, and Universal City, this is the only place he can eat the Caribbean lost, and all the, the tail lost there. Caribbean lost there. Spencer played, there's a chip to the Spencer. I've been struggling. By 2019, we have my place on fire. 2020, COVID hit me. No help. I'm doing this by myself. 21, you know, we spare. I've been struggling, you know? I want to keep my restaurant in the city, you know? This isn't the power for the city. I really know it's like, I'm here for serving the community. It brings the good food, it goodbye, it good love. I never been troll. This is the chief commander.
He gave me a promotion. I appreciate it.
The first time I've seen him for a long time. If my first time see you, I'm a, this way is like a blessing for me, you know? So I want to, let me say, like, somebody speaks Spanish.
Maybe I can sum it up for you. So Andy Yeo has been here a very, very long time, and he has gone through some very hard times. He's working very hard right now to get his business back open, and with this audience here and the ones that are watching online, we just ask that when he gets to that point, that you give him the support that he needs so he can continue to thrive within our community. We thank you all, Andy Yeo, for coming.
Thank you. Best of luck to you, my friend. All right, all right. Anyone else? Anyone want to figure out that one? All right. Let's move on then to our first item of CD under business. It's no tab, it's tab number one. CBS Color Coder Energy Conservation Presentation. Last month, I was at the Elmeria Council of Congress meeting. I had the privilege of being on their board, and there was a presentation, CBS Energy, that I thought would be really, really informative to everyone in our, in our community. So I asked, are you willing to take this on the road? And they said, yep. And here they are. So Malady Nazir is going to make the presentation tonight.
I think Kristen's going to hop up the.
Kristen's going to get ready to pop up her little presentation. I think you're going to find this very informational, it's very much for all of us. So that's why I asked you to come in tonight.
Well, thank you, good evening, everybody. Mayor, thank you, and council, thank you for having us here. It's really important that we have the support of you and also the community, because it's about being the community. And like you mentioned, this is a color-coded conservation program. We actually launched it last summer, but this year we are getting a lot of support from the local media, and we hope that everybody here will adopt the energy measures that we're promoting, but also spread, spread the word. So let me just start by, again, the summer campaign, Beat the Heat, it's in English and in Spanish, because it's really important to communicate to the community in language as well. And, you know, this program is, is pretty simple. It's a four level colored coded system. So most days, they're green days. So we're asking the community to practice everyday conservation, steps at home, you know? You know, you know, set the AC at 78 degrees, you know, make sure you use a fan, if it's safe for you to use, to use a fan. Do what you can to keep basically the AC inside your home. Bring down the shades, things like that. Yellow days is where now we see a peak demand, so we see that the temperatures are going up, right? And so we're all using that AC. But what we're asking the community is, we're wearing yellow days like today, to conserve more, to be patient. If you don't have to do laundry between three and eight, don't do the laundry. It can wait. Try to not use large appliances, because our collective efforts really do matter. We are saving energy, we're conserving energy, and it helps not only savings for the consumers, but also to be great, to our local grid as well. And we're asking the community to make sure that they get involved, that they can follow us on social media to learn more about it. So you have actually a handout of the campaign and the tips. It's in English and Spanish. We encourage you to please get involved and spread the word. So for yellow day days from three to eight, we're just reminding the community to conserve, conserve, conserve. So the summer campaign, you know, we really created this figure out, this kind of round. We are doing digital billboards, we're directly communicating with consumers, with our residents, with the community. You know, if they sign up for an energy alert, they'll get a message. They'll say, hey, today's a yellow conservation day. Also online, they can see ads, of course, the bus system, they're really important for us to communicate, TV, we do appearances, we talk to the press all the time. I'm not sure if you've seen, but since, because it's Friday, the news have just been doing a wonderful job of reporting that we're in a yellow level conservation, and it's really, really encouraging for us, the message for Beat the Heat campaign is getting out. This time, we're also doing mall kiosks, so when people go shopping, they can see that it's important to save energy and in-store. So when you go shopping and you turn the back of your receipt, you'll see messaging on Beat the Heat. So the other two portions of the Beat the Heat, you have the orange and the red alert, and those are not, those are cold light or hot. We focus on the green and the yellow. And for the next couple of days, we are in yellow. I will say that. The next slide, thank you. It's about recognition. People are happy. Members of the industry are happy. The Public Relations Society of America, the local chapter here, awarded us for our marketing campaign. And also the American Public Power Association, which is our peers at the national level. They thought that this is a tremendous campaign that we're doing, and they love when we're done with our website, because it's really easy to navigate and understand what you can do, save, what, what steps you can take, and what programs to take advantage of as well. Next, next slide, thank you. And the other ask that we have beyond conservation is, we want to hear from the meeting, and there's so many different ways that we can get the input, the feedback from our community. We have regular board meetings, monthly board meetings. Now, youth online, the community can register to provide public input, similar like this forum. We also have quarterly meetings open to the public. The next one is coming up on the 26th of June, as well as. As well as other committees that we have that provide feedback to CBS Energy, the RAP and the Citizen Advisory Committee. Those are also available online. People can stream, they can keep up to date with what we're doing, initiatives that we have. And also there's lots of assistance that we're promoting. Utility assistance, how to take advantage of rebates. It's a lot of the community, there's a lot of help there, but you know, they just have to get informed. So that's one of the things that we're definitely stressing, to take advantage of rebates as well. And finally, we're knocking on doors, we're at events, we're at fairs and making sure that we're communicating this messaging. One of the things that we did in this campaign is we had focus groups. And you know, we wanted to keep the campaign simple, like, hey, conserve, you know? But when we did the focus groups, the community wanted magnets under refrigerators. And really specific, really detailed. So we listened and definitely have refrigerator magnets. We have some outside as well. And really urge those here, please pick up, spread the word. And finally, I think we have another slide. Yes, again, we want to hear from the community. We want the community to know what we're doing as well. We have the newsroom, people can sign up for our newsletters. Rudy, Rudy Garza, he has his own newsletter where you can hear directly about what's going on in the industry and also with the heat and the forms of conservation. We're asking also the community to sign up for the energy alerts. That way you know about conservation, if there's any issues. And it's always good to get involved in those alerts. And finally, that's it. I think that's it, that's the last slide. Yeah, follow us on social media. Thank you so much. I really do appreciate it. And thank you for supporting me. Anything else, Mayor?
No, I just want to make sure that you all have the opportunity to, there are some handouts.
We have the handouts and my, I'm a little outside.
I'll open it up to the council once they make a couple of comments as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for being here, Ms. Nazir. I appreciate your presentation. I believe that CPS Energy also has a program whereby residents can elect to allow CPS to control their thermostat during high periods of demand. Can you talk about that for a moment?
Yes, what I will say is called the Wi-Fi thermostat rewards program. And it's a program where for those who have simple education, they can get a rebate, I believe it's up to $85,000. And then they'll get a full credit at the end of the year. And basically, it's part of our demand response program. And basically, like on a yellow day, you know, we have participants. We have, you know, residents, we have business members that agree to conserve more during the peak, peak undergalls. And that's basically from two to seven or three to eight, as we're seeing right now. And that is a voluntary program. And you know, one of the things that we say is we feel a lot, feel a lot safe. If we don't have to pay for it. So yes, that is open to the public. There's Wi-Fi thermostat rewards. You can get information at cpsenergy.com/wifi thermostat rewards.
Perfect. What I think, I've talked to some people about this and they say, there's no way I'm letting CPS Energy like into my Wi-Fi network or something like that. What's the CPS Energy response to any privacy concerns that somebody might have?
Well, I'm not sure that I would be able to answer that right now. What I will say is, is that people can opt out at any time. They can opt out at any time. If they don't want to, if somebody agrees, they can opt out. And then, yeah, it's not a topic. But we will make sure we get that answered soon.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other questions?
Thank you.
I was just going to make a statement. I'm sure I'm part of that program. And I'm just a little touched, but you know, but I haven't any Wi-Fi concerns or heard, you know, where you can help or anything else. But I have noticed that sometimes it's a little hard to want to get help. It's actually a lot cooler than what I worked at earlier days.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate the presentation. I hope this is informative to you and the audience as well. Thanks for coming. All right, next item is, here's another tab, tab number two. Aviation District Master Plan. Your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. We've done a lot talking about, you know, the components of the aviation district master plan. And what I'd asked Michael and also I think Kristen, pass some input for Manhattan's plan. Is to talk about the work that was done by the consultants. Thank you, the work that was done by the consultants. And some of the data that they collected while they were working on this specific plan. So I'll hand it over to Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Council. So the Aviation District Master Plan, as everyone is familiar with, we're just going to go over some highlights, where we've been, where we're at, where we're going. So what I think is important first to step back and look at the 2018 comprehensive plan, which gave direction to city council, which then gave direction to staff based on input from 346 residents, six focus panels. And the direction, some of the highlights that we provided with regard to the Aviation District Master Plan is that staff should identify, purchase, develop land for parking and town square in the aviation district. Second item is that we should put an architect on retainer to help with the storefront improvement program. And that's been a benefit, one of the examples, one of the benefits is to gather brewery. So the EDC in the city did help contribute to the redevelopment that makes a successful business in the aviation district. The last thing is that the comprehensive plan directed council to direct staff to develop a master plan for the redevelopment, revitalization of the aviation district. And so that's exactly what staff has done. So staff has been followed with the city council. That brings us to the plan itself. And there's two things, the vision and the goals. So let's just go over the vision first. So redevelopment versus revitalization. So do we do teardowns to start over versus repurposing and upgrading? So a combination of both is probably likely what's going to happen. And yeah, the brewery is an example of that. That's a redevelopment, remodeling of an existing structure and business. Interconnected, be able to provide for a relationship between businesses, residences and parks. Daytime vibrancy, which leads into life at night, two are kind of intermingled. But we want to provide a mix of businesses that provides some happiness in that downtown area. And so by life at night, we want to bring in some activity after five o'clock on the weekends and make it a destination. Goals, so. The goals are that we'd like to provide a vibrant public realm. Town center, public square, a mix of uses, again, life at night, walkability, entertainment areas, small gathering spaces, parks and parlets. And the aviation master plan also called for the buildings to be placed closer to the street to create as much of a street wall as possible because that is more of new urbanist and creates a better environment for what we're trying to go, trying to achieve. So the master plan, again, a direction that was provided from the comprehensive plan. We did interview approximately 25 area stakeholders, got their feedback. So that was part of the analysis that was done by our consultants. They did generate a market analysis and a land use analysis. I'll go through the market analysis in just a bit. A traffic analysis was also conducted as part of this study. And that included data from PEXST as well as some fresh traffic counts. Again, those are three years old, but at that time they were. It also provided guidance or looked at the future land use plan as well as the zoning ordinance. And so the Aviation District Master Plan itself is a slight departure or at least a remodeling of the existing zoning in that area to again, meet the goals and the vision of the master plan. So from the study, there were four main takeaways that we received. First one is a need for a public gathering place and a metaverse for seniors. There is a lack of diverse restaurants, a lack of definitive signage, branding or streetscaping. So we want to be able to provide as we develop and revitalize this area, some landmarks that let someone who's driving into the aviation district know that, hey, you're in the aviation district. And we can achieve that through different types of branding, signage and street behavior. And then also each in place opportunities is a major concern. This is not just a UC issue, as I've mentioned before in previous presentations. This is a nationwide issue. As we have an older generation that no longer, they don't have kids in the house anymore. They don't need the house, the size of a home that they currently have. They like to downsize. Unfortunately, there are not a lot of opportunities for them to stay within their community, within Universal City. And so what the master plan calls for is diversity in housing types. And that would include increased density, different types. So just not larger single-family homes, but different sized single-family homes, duplexes, triplexes, maybe apartments, none of those. So the master, the market analysis that went into this study. They've retrieved data from various sources, including CMSI, which is the private source for labor market data, COSTAR, which is for commercial real estate data, industry business analysts, US Census Bureau, at that time it was the 2010 census data that was provided, Bear County Appraisal District, the Comptroller's Office for Sales data, apartment of housing urban development for building permit history, and then Zillow for home listings. So what was also identified is that Universal City is at the center of a growing donut. So our adjacent communities of Selma, Livo, Coppers, Civil Insurance, it's projected that they will see significant growth, population growth in the coming years. Universal City, in order to compete, these, because we're landlocked, we need to provide for infill redevelopments at higher densities. So just to touch some of these items that are on the screen. In the study area itself, there are 130 parcels that were identified. 65% of those structures were built before 1968. 50% were built before 1978. There's only been two structures built since 2006. So we have quite an old stock of both commercial and residential. There are 98 landowners. 73% of those are individuals. So that makes it a little more difficult, you're dealing with individuals, to consolidate lots to achieve ambition. However, because of the way that that area was designed initially, it has a strong street grid foundation, which allows for us to develop walker, walk-friendly block lanes. The average sized home in Universal City at the time of the study was about 2,100 square feet. But homes in the study area were about 500 to 700 square feet smaller, about 20%. It also identified that the lot coverage ratios in the study area were lower than the city averaged by about 15 to 20%. And what that means is that the footprints of the homes could be a little larger, 15 to 20% to maximize the use of the lot. So this just identifies the 22 parcels, or 17% of the parcels in the aviation district that are vacant. And so that has its pros and cons. Obviously, when you see a lot of vacancies, a lot of vacant parcels, a lot of hang structures not known, that could suggest some problems, but it also provides an opportunity for redevelopments. Meaning that if a developer is able to consolidate lots, or they want to build something, they don't have to worry about taking down existing structures. So what are the tools to guide us moving forward? Well, infrastructure improvements are important. Obviously, we have to have that baseline or to provide for the increased density, the new buildings, the modern structures. The capacity is going to be an important issue. And so some of the things that, one of the things that we've done, Public Works has redone completely aviation district, including the infrastructure there remains. So other parts of the downtown area are also going to have to be improved. A lot of those city sewer and water mains are old. So they'll have to be upgraded as the redevelopment occurs. The plan called for a multi-modal plan. So we want to provide synergy between walking, biking and driving. We want to examine the streets, the sidewalks, pedestrian paths, bicycle lanes, one-way streets, potentially, and community parking lots. Commercial and residential developments. We would like to provide investors and developers a clear set of guidelines so they have a known set of data and process data coming in. That's a huge question for developers, is what is the process? How much am I going to have to spend to get through the process? And how long will it take? What is the likelihood that will be successful? So this plan helps guide them in what the uses are that city council suggests that they would like to see in that area. Some of the ways, in addition to that, we can help them out is provide a plan, we did development districts. We haven't done that, but we can also provide planning to developments for specific developments within the area. So we can also create a sign plan that's unified, that's equitable for all the different businesses coming in. So they're all treated the same. They know what they can expect. They know what they can do and know the process to get it done quickly. And then lastly, the plan called for, as I mentioned, to create a list and prioritize properties to purchase. Some of the other ways we can attract investment and incentivize investment is potentially explore the possibility of tiers, which is a tax increment, reinvestment zone, or tax rebates. It's important, how do we pay for all of this? Well, there's a few different ways that you can explore. Impact fees is one way, as we've done in the past in different communities. We can sell land that the EDC has acquired at reduced value. And we can have the EDC continue to make investments in the redevelopment of this area. One of the last things, which I'm sure everybody will be happy to, can actually accomplish this, is to establish a quiet, somewhat long aviation boulevard. That street does get pretty loud. So here's some, here's the plan itself, two different versions. So what have we done so far? I'm not going to go through all of these, but just some of the highlights. As you can see, as I mentioned, we redone the aviation boulevard. That's important. We required or purchased certain properties. We provided city council, the public with a concept plan for a town square for that idea. We put sound out to RFP 302 Pad Hook Road, which is the old Shell gas station for redevelopment. We're expecting those proposals within the next week or two. And there's some various different things there that staff of the city has accomplished to again, bring this plan to fruition. So some of the ideas that we have moving forward. Food truck park. So you're probably aware that we've been working with someone in the downtown area for about two and a half years, it seems to be true, to establish a food truck park. And so they just opened this past weekend, past Thursday, Friday and Saturday for their soft opening. And talking to the owners this morning, he said it was very successful. He was very happy with the number of trucks that came through and with the number of patients that came through as well. And so he's very excited about moving forward to expand the hours and identify specifically which types of food trucks are going to be more mature in case there are. All the other ideas that we have is kiosks, that type of venue. It should be temporary or interim. Maybe a community garden, bar march market, or a car meet. Again, just some ideas for the interim to bring activity into that area. And that is all I have for now.
You know, I'm talking about roast food drive. I'm talking to Shane over there. I see he got a different building remodeling. I was talking about 218 roast food drive.
That's not part of the plan.
You know, part of the plan.
Yes, that is that, that's for.
But with every good plan up the, you know, sometimes the boundaries of it will be all.
I like the, I like the, for the food truck, you know? You know how many people he been for a long time?
Yes.
Is there any way to go back to that first slide? I had a question. I think it was the very first slide. Nope, I'm kidding. It's the second one. Okay. That first thing says identify, purchase, develop land for parking and town square. So who's, that's what the people wanted?
That's what the people at city council wanted.
Okay. But that says develop land for parking at a town square. Not purchasing land for other things, correct? Am I reading that correctly? Like it says identify purchased land for parking at a town square.
So in somewhere else in that, as I mentioned, the comparison of purchase or identify land. land shows.
But for anything? Because this is parking in town square.
Yeah, that's just a bullet I put up there, it's like applied that, that was the direction some council used that, and we'll be doing.
I'm just confused, because that says buying land for parking in town square. We get, the last presentation you saw had an apartment complex, parking garage, and a town square. So it didn't say apartments. In this sentence, it doesn't say apartments, it just says parking in town square. Okay, I was curious, like, that's what people wanted, but we're going above and beyond that scope, I guess? Okay.
Just to maybe help answer Ms. Higler's question about the batteries. So you had a map up there briefly, but do you know if it goes from Crockett to Tree?
Yeah, so it's pretty clear, the plan was, it's Travis Tree.
The tree's on the other side, yeah, to that, that street, and the other side.
The plan also calls for, if it's successful, it could be expanded, which would make sense.
What would be the plan for those houses, Crockett to Tree? In an ideal world, if they would be torn down and rebuilt, something bigger? You're saying that you want to have a bigger footprint in those lots?
It's a hard to dictate that.
Sure.
All the options are available to the current property owners, or whatever the future property owners are, whether they want to remodel the existing house and just make it more modern. Maybe they want to keep the house on management, maybe somebody has permission of tearing it down, and that's kind of one of those things that the market will dictate for each end and for each individual owner. And those lots are in varying sizes, so whoever the owner is, or the intended owner, or future owner, will be, will really be the ones that are making the decision on what happens to the property they own.
Are there any current limitations on that now? If they wanted to renovate their house, but do they have to make it a certain size, or do they have to make it in those certain ways?
Yeah, they're currently following the existing code, so meet the bulk regulations of the current zone. Again, this is the guideline, this is the vision for that area, so we have someone who wants to come in, we have a nice applicant. They could have torn it down and built a single-family home, but they could remodel that home, it would have been expensive, and the house would have been a bit more expensive than that. But just plan calls for increased density, calls for these types of residential units. It also calls for us to follow the current code, which is why it's not good for you for a specific use permit or you can.
Yes, let's close this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we follow the master plans with our compliance, right? We try to develop the sign. The master plans we put together are exactly what you said, they're kind of guidelines. It's not a set in stone set of regulations, but this is, this is a plan to get where we want to go. We do work with a lot of clients that don't develop immediately from a master plan, they just, they just say, hey, I'm going to drop this, that's out. And we're going to drop this building here, and then the next building over there, and the next building over there. Then we look, I mean, and be like, ah, really wish we had done X, Y, or Z. That's what the master plan is trying to help guide. But if somebody comes in and says, I really want to do something different here, you're not going to stop them, or you're going to allow them, as long as it falls something within what the relevant will be wanting.
Yeah, we're going to, so we had this conversation with prospective, our Patrick purchaser, who's a land in the aviation district a couple of weeks ago, and we, and we tell them, look, what they were proposing to do would be a continuation of the existing types of uses there, which is not, does not need division. So legally, they could continue, continue that type of use in that district, and we, we're not going to stop them, but we're going to explain to them the vision, and try and pitch that to them, to give them the broader scope of what we're looking to accomplish. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. But we understand that the market does drive it, that this is not a codified plan, it's not an overly district, it's what you said, it's a set of guidelines that will help us guide the future of that area.
But another.
So, because when I'm talking about the master plan, one of my favorites that I heard, and I kind of agree with it, was if it doesn't have Phil Miller's, doesn't have Taco Bell, it's why are we looking? So again, my argument is, is it's a guideline, this is, this is a direction we look ahead, but the, that's part of that argument. Another aspect of it is, is shutting down a road lane that's highly trafficked. I like the idea of being able to shut that down at night, whenever it's, whenever we're seeing that walkability, but, you know, to shut it down 24 hours a day on a fatana. But, let's see, I'm trying to go through some of the other things that were brought up, but I feel like that's about what he's been discovering. Oh, we talked about signage. And one is, is kind of the, we're directing people from one side down to the other, trying to maintain some type of standard that we've been putting together, but then also putting together a standard in that district. Is that something you're looking for, council to say, hey, Mike, let's go ahead and make it happen? Or are you going to go ahead and try to put together some type of signage standards for the aviation district?
So, yeah, ideally we'd like to put together a comprehensive sign plan or sign code that everyone in that district will have to follow. But that would take approval by city council first direction, by city councils. So there are three components to the sign issue with that aviation district. One is where you're hunting signage there. The second one is landmark sign, so if the plan itself calls for it, shows an arch at the south and the north side, so that's again, that lifts you into aviation district. And then individual signage for individual businesses. So those are the three components to the sign package. What we've been doing is, again, we're following the current sign code that's pretty old. And so we may be coming back to you with some suggestions on how to maximize the advertisement and marketing for some of the existing businesses, so we can, you know, help them grow, help them be successful. But right now, we're following the existing sign.
And then they come out in the next home, or you have to find that one too, when we look at market analysis, signage, and streets, and things of that nature, selling, future values plan, and then strategic initiatives, that may come up, we don't know, because we have the, 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 this is happening.
And then one, one other thing that I heard was, that, you know, like Miss Putt said, there's people that like certain things, and people that don't like other things. There, I hear a lot, there are several people that are not excited about the arch aspect, and I'm just wondering, how do we, how do, how do we as a city decide on that?
President and council will decide.
City council will decide on that. Because I was, I was, I'm always a fan of, hey, let's put together some type of design competition and see what these people think. So, just don't let that go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, there's also tree skating, this is why, so that's, tree skating is a part, it's related to that arch, but more, it's more about the lighting, trying to unify and create a comprehensive package that will kind of optimize the city or aviation district. That includes the light poles, you know, the designer light poles, eye, style. What staff would do is that we would put together good ideas, put them together, where you, you know, down, completing it, present that to you, and then you would give a split direction, either strap it, continue with these three, or if you like it, go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Casado, you would indulge me, please. Could you talk to us about how the land will be acquired, and will there ever be a use of eminent domain to acquire any of the properties in the aviation district?
So, as you know, we've been using the economic development corporation, has been doing a lot of work to get this program fruition by purchasing select parcels that they've identified as key, in order to get the town halls and all of those amenities in with it. So they have been doing that. Our intention at this point is not to really be looking at the residential area, because one, that's not what the economic development focuses, their focus is on the commercial. The residential ones like to come through private development, like we've seen, we had another duplex that was pitched a while back, that quite hasn't gotten off the ground, but something of that nature. That's kind of all done by private development, we don't really have much involved in that, except for the commercial asset. In terms of eminent domain, no, we will not do that.
Thank you.
There's no need for it.
And then a final question is a legal one. Have we done a copyright analysis with St. Louis to make sure that we're not violating anything?
No, certainly we have not. Again, it's just a conceptual zone. If the council is ready to come up with some kind of marker, obviously, going to find some examples, and not how we decided what else.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are we good? Are you ready?
Um, I don't know if you can tell me this, like, in front of everyone, but you said the gas station you guys put out in RFP. Can you say what you're hoping, so like, what you, what do you think is going to come in that, or no? I was, I don't, I'm on the spot, sorry. I was just curious, like, if you put out RFP to say, like, apartments, or you're thinking, like, a restaurant, or you can't say?
Well, the best purpose of doing an RFP is to let other people come back and tell us what their ideas were. The RFP was put out by the economic development corporation, just so you understand that. And so they did put it out, right, they bought the building.
Yep.
And so, you know, they don't have a hold of it.
Yeah.
That's not their, that's not their goal. So they put the RFP out so that people could make a pitch to them for what they see as the vision on that particular property, and then they receive to hear those pitches, and then determine if that is the direction that they would like it to go, and if it is, that's probably what we will negotiate.
But what are they leaning towards getting told now?
They're not leaning toward anything.
Okay, so just anything, whatever anyone comes up with, okay?
But we have presented them, they understand that there's an aviation district.
Yeah, all of that, everybody in the RFP has been through the aviation district, that's what they understand. That's their, their guidance, their guidance.
Okay. Thank you, thanks for the presentation, everyone. I hope it was meaningful to you all in the audience as well. Yes, it is. It's a future of our area, and we have a lot of redevelopment, and a very, very clear to us. All right, next item is at number tab three, we're going to have, have a public hearing in a few minutes. We'll have a presentation by, by staff first, then we'll open up the public hearing, but it's related to PC 574 SU 101, PC 672, request for a specific use permit, and related variants for .15708, located at 201 East Lindbergh Boulevard, and number one, allow it to mark residential unit in ROTO Town Residential District, and two, exceed the maximum density requirements, 16 units per acre, allow 19 units per acre for zoning ordinance 581. We'll have a do with the presentation from staff first, then we'll open up the public hearing, to allow you to comment, if you're interested to comment about it, and we'll close the hearing, then we'll go to the next item, which gives, which gives members of council, have a today to get it on, so, Mr. Higler?
Thank you, Mayor. Michael's going to go over the presentation, and then also provide feedback on the plan that's on the mission.
Okay, so as mentioned, we're discussing 201 East Lindbergh Boulevard, which is in the aviation district, that's the plan. And so it's a corner lot, which allows for a proposal to move forward. So it's on Lindbergh and Booby Drive. So there's an existing, dilapidated, single-family home. You know, the staff has been working with a couple of property owners over the last few years on that property, as I mentioned, initial intent, I think, was to go in and remodel that property of that home, but it's just so, at the point of disrepair, that didn't make sense to move forward with that plan. So they have created, understanding that we do have the master plan in place, that calls for high density. And so what they're proposing tonight is a triplex, which, now, just to go over some of the specifics, again, this is zone, ROT district residential old town, and a use of this density of this type does require a specific use permit, which goes to plan commission, which makes a recommendation to city council. And so, let's see, here's just some of the specifics about the project. So I'm going to go to the actual plans themselves, because they're very illustrative. Staff has been working with this development, it's the same architect that brought forward the duplex that was approved a year and a half ago, I believe it was, for another property in this area. And so, just scroll down a little. So as you can see, if you look at the architectural elevations provided in the packet, they are providing a lot of articulation. It's not just a rectangular box with a flat plane going across each of the four sides. It does have articulation, it's two and three stories, depending on the unit, three units. The first unit, which fronts Lindbergh, is about 2,600 square feet, total space, 1,850 square feet of living space, and again, that means the, the direction of the path of the plan is to increase the size of the units as much as possible, we understand, the market dictates. Unit two, which is in the middle, fronting Booby, living space is about 1,420 square feet, and unit three, which is, again, living space is again 1,420. The exterior materials are a combination of brick and siding. Each of these units will be sprinkler, so fire alarm and suppression is required, and they're providing that. There's space in, each of the units has a two-car garage, which exceeds the, you know, square footage for a garage, and it provides for enough room for the garbage cans, the recycling, and the trash can to be inside the garage, enough room for parking. We also wanted to make sure that if someone had an 1.50, that they would, they park in the driveway, they wouldn't be overhanging the sidewalk, so they've accommodated that request. And that's very important, obviously, for the downtown, for them to create the question for the environment, so people can easily navigate down the sidewalks in town. The back patio has two units, I'm sorry, there's a back patio on two of the units, and a smaller outdoor area, first of all, on the property facing Lindbergh. And let's see here, I think that pretty much covers it. They did go before plan commission, and they did receive unanimous recommendation of approval, we sent out, as required by state, 26 notices. We also noticed in the newspaper, there was, as I mentioned, the staff know a resident, two residents across the street, living in the home across the street, that did have concern about parking. So again, we explained that the lot itself, each unit has two enough space inside the garage for two vehicles, no space on the driveway for two vehicles, so four spaces per unit. And then there is street parking that's allowed throughout all of town, necessary as well. But in addition to that, another item that should be coming up soon is, if you've driven down there, you've seen all of that category, with the, the EDC did purchase an area which is almost kitty-corner to this property for it to develop a public parking area, and so that will provide some additional parking for guests. And the applicants is here, answering the questions.
Do, do you have someone else that would like to make a couple of comments about the property?
Sure, so we have the property owner and the architect are here as well, and please, if you'd like to.
Listen to them before you open the door.
My name is Amy Oneal, at 1357 in town of this. I've been here on my, on my fourth big year, yeah, but we love the Universal City. I see it has been so long for like three years, and I hate it, because I'm a contractor here, you'd be back here if you were, actually stayed at Short Home Central in town, people would have bought our houses, so, but we love this area, we'll be back. The only thing that I didn't like about Universal City is, is not good, and sometimes you, and don't care about the older people, but a lot of people are here, and what I see from other cities is, is not, like, you know, 30, 40-year-olds hanging out downtown or anything out, so that might, shouldn't be the plan, because we're looking at different projects to invest in Universal City. I like the plan, and we love, we were a company, we wanted to do duplex, but to build a duplex, it's like, why not just build triplexes? We actually do it, or as I said, it's possible. And it follows in line with higher density, and I actually created, I built it, so it's like three-bedroom, two-and-a-half baths, so it's more for small families. So it's like, I started on for small families, but I am using it for the products in the short term, but in the future, I'm going to sell it to people, so I can be, never families in the Universal City. And that's my vision of the aviation district, for the young families to gather, I will offer the districts places to do kids' events, restaurants, and once aviation project gets full blown, I think be great for small families. And of course, that district has great. And of course, that district has great school districts, so I think it'd be a plus for young families. Again, I built this place, and that fits the aviation project. I am using the for pilots right now. And to alleviate, uh, spam, I, I have three houses that I've been to pilots. No parties, and majority of my, uh, deposits that come are for their family. So the pilots are in their twenties, they have, uh, looks like a white, and preschool kids, so they're very, I'm out here. That's most, a lot, like sixty percent of clients have, maybe that, that's what we, class over system. It's for, those are pilots and young families.
All right, good, thank you very much. All right, so let me go ahead and open up the public hearing now. It is, uh, seven forty-one. And, and again, it's related to the specific use permit for that one point one five seven oh eight track at two oh one East Lindbergh. So would anyone like to address counsel related to this particular issue? Public hearing is open now. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to, this is a short-term leasing issue. There's no guarantee they're gonna bring families. And everywhere else in the area where the pilots are coming, the trainees, they're doubling up and tripling up. In the neighborhood right behind Randall off the shore, there's a very nice neighborhood, but those houses are four hundred and fifty, five hundred thousand dollars. And yet that neighborhood, there are four homes that are being used exclusively as short-term rentals, and it's ruined their neighborhood. Their HOA have had to harass them and harass them, and finally want them to put up for sale. There is no HOA there. What are the residents gonna do when you have the issue with the party? I used to work officer's, I was an officer on Randall from the military. I did TD wise, I know all about the TD, you know, the, the trainees who come here, or military family. I'm Air Force, went down, retired from the Air Force. Love the Air Force, but the reality is, most of the trainee pilots come here without their family for the short term. A lot of times, they go on to another base to continue their short-term training, they go from base to base. I'm just saying, what are the residents supposed to do? There's no HOA there. If you go through the complaint process with the city, if there's an issue with those places, by the time they go through the process, they've already moved on. There's simply no recourse once you open the door for short term. And it's gonna be the same catastrophe as we had with the Airbnb's in other cities. I'm just saying, once you go down this road, it's gonna affect who moves in and builds things in that area because of that short-term residency. So I, again, I just, please do what you wanna do from the beginning, because I think it'll be fantastic home to be individually owned or leased on the long term, but please don't bring short-term leasing into that area.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'd say, two years previous to pilots, I've never had a party, or leases, no parties. And ninety percent of the time, it's one party.
Right, you made that very quick, thank you. Yes, sir.
Do you need to go off to the podium?
Yes, please.
My name's Kim, that's over the one three four one zero dot. I don't know if this question is appropriate or not, based on what you're talking about, but when you mention street parking, does that still allow, if there's parking on both sides, for adequate flow of two-way traffic on that street?
Yeah, unless the, the street code prohibits that currently, then yes.
Anyone else? No, we're, we're not on yet.
Oh.
We gotta close the...
Shut my car!
Then you're gonna be out.
Sorry.
Anybody else? Okay, I'll close the public hearing now. At, uh, seven forty-five, move on now, that's question number B. Discuss and consider that order, which is six fifty-five J twenty twenty-three, at this turn, as it would approve as a specific use permit. To one and when, for a market residential unit and density variance for triplex on, uh, R O Town, Old Town Residential District, a property located at two oh one East Lindbergh, uh, and providing non-ceverability and establishing effective date. This would be the first grade scenario, open it up to counsel, make your comments to Mr. Casella or, or, uh, the, uh, the officer. We'll go from there, so, yes, sir. Anyone else?
Um, a question for the property owner, actually, Mr. Wayne, you said you live at one three five zero seven, what's that?
Yes, sir.
You're former military, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
How long?
Twenty-two years.
What service?
Air Force.
You're familiar with the Air Force procedures and policies regarding transient pilots, yes?
Yes.
Could I ask perhaps a favor? You say that you will provide to the neighboring residents around there, a form for which they can contact the base, so that if there is any incidence of misbehavior, loud parties, because obviously you're not gonna have cameras in the place, you're not gonna be able to monitor what goes on there, would you maybe provide the residents around the area, say hi, we're gonna have some temporary pilots here, if any, if there's any trouble, here's a, here's a, you can contact on the base, and they will bring the hammer down? Because my experience with the military, that's kinda what happens.
Yeah, I wouldn't, uh, personally, I wouldn't have them do it, do it, go to me, and I put the hammer down with their commander.
Good.
That's my, that's why I like doing military, because it's easy to put down a hammer.
Yes, sir, just a general comment, I, I, I believe that Miss Sefton's comments are not invalid, that not, uh, short-term rentals can be a problem. We've all read the horror stories online about all of these things, but given the fact that these are young pilots that are coming in, who are at the beginning of their careers, the last thing that they wanna do is get dorked up by their command for something that they did that was stupid, off-base, off-duty. So, uh, I for one have confidence in the professionalism of our young pilots coming through here on training, and with you as a backup, as a, as a point of contact for the local residents, I'm confident approving this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Wayne. Thank you, Mr. Wayne.
Uh, are you gonna have an HOA for this property, or no?
Only if I sell it, because it's new properties, but I would have to develop one if I sell it.
Okay, I have one more question. Um, how come you can't just do long-term leases to house owners? Like, how come you wanna do pilots first as opposed to just doing? Because obviously, they're beautiful, it'd be a really cute starter home for a lot of people, so why not just start with that?
Well, it costs a lot of money to go there, but, uh, I've done long-term rentals for a while, and the house has not kept up. So what I like about short-term rentals is I clean it regularly, I maintain the yards, I make sure that the house is in great order outside and inside. So personally, I would think the residents outside would not have to worry about the grass, like you, ma'am, or just the way that the yard looks, or the house looks, or how trash, or what they store outside. You don't have to worry about E V A, because they're temporarily, I can maintain it and keep it in great order. So why do you think looking house? I think short-term rental is probably easiest. Long-term, just heavy. So I've done both, and I'm not a short-term therapist, the house is, I mean, it keeps it, uh, keeps it looking nice all the time.
I understand Miss Sefton's concerns, and I, I do share them a little bit, um, but you're part of our community, and you're here, you're in University City, it's not California, so we don't have somebody that we're dealing with that we can't get a hold of, um, on your neighbor. Can I come knock on your door, if you got a problem down there, and can you fix it for us?
Yeah. That's what you asked.
Um, I know there's been a lot of horror stories about Airbnb's, but I do see the short-term rentals of the military pilots in training as slightly different. Um, and you talked about cleaning, is that just in between rentals you go in? Or do you have a regular cleaning service that goes in?
Every month, uh, every month we play a divorce movie.
Okay, so that's part of your agreement with them, is that you're gonna go in and, okay. And you will provide the neighbors with the means to contact you?
Yes.
Are you gonna, how do you envision that? What do you envision that looking like?
Having to know the plan, but it's very random, but I, I will therefore have a bit smarter, um, for anyone.
I think that would be, it would be good, I think, if they felt like they had a number or something, they could contact or some sort of response.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I might add, you know, like, in terms of contact, because obviously, we know we have Airbnb's in the city, we know we have block access in the city, they're almost every new group, yes, they are. Um, and some of them, we don't know about at all, and sometimes there is a problem at one or two. The, the ability that we have as a city is when there is a very big issue, obviously, the police are gonna go first, right? We'll send them first. But if it's just an ongoing issue of noise or trash or something of that nature, from the staff perspective, we just go to the user or the account, which has the, uh, owner's, uh, name and phone number, address, and cell phone, and everything else, and we can just contact them directly, if in fact the homeowner or neighbor can't get a hold of the owner themselves. So I just wanted to throw that out there, we do have the means to contact all property owners.
Now, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, um, looking at the, uh, concepts of the, uh, building itself, I, 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 I love. Um, for me, it, uh, it fits in with the concept of, and our long-range plan for that, uh, aviation district. Uh, what we always say, we're, we're landlocked, so we have to think about, you know, we think about down the road, we have to move. If we're gonna be doing anything, we have to build up, because we can't build out. Um, I like this concept of the, uh, the triplex, uh, um, and especially in that area, when we're talking about foot traffic, uh, the, uh, concept of the aviation district, what we have for long-term plan, um, walkability, uh, family areas. Uh, this fits in extremely nice. So I wanna thank you for that, and, uh, I, I don't have a, a real big problem with it. I am gonna come at this from another point as far as what Miss Sefton's concerned. Um, I too am concerned about that. It's not a deal breaker for me, but what we're saying is, this is just for pilots. And to me, I, you know, I'm looking at that area, anywhere in that area, on a long-term basis, if we allow this, it sets a presence down the line to be able to do more short, short-term. I don't believe, for what we're looking at for the future personally, that that's a great idea for that area. I like the longer term, um, so families can feel safe. And I'm not saying anything bad about, I mean, what, what you're talking about, I believe you're gonna keep it up, and we have other ways of going with, with face and everything. I just don't see that area in the future, um, being somewhere where, uh, short-term i- is a good idea on, on, on a big basis, because I see this concept here branching out into, uh, the neighborhood of the building up down the road, when you have to change your plan on your house, and you're able to be, build it ahead, whether, uh, to develop it, uh, what are you gonna do for the future, um, for the future of the city? This, again, we can't grow, so this is, fits well in that plan. We have, uh, we have a plan down by, uh, in, uh, in Process, uh, behind Walmart area, sixteen oh four, that area back there, that, uh, I see the plan going up, that might be a better place for short-term, the way that we're looking at doing it over there, in my personal opinion. Um, again, it's not a deal breaker for me, but I do not want to start, I say, a precedence of, you'd say, well, they lay a lot of there, you know, and, and, and branching out to be more and more down the line. And again, I'm not trying to think five years down the road, I'm trying to think twenty, thirty years, forty years down the road. But, uh, this is fantastic, I like it, and the, the way it builds up, um, I won't want to even talk about that shit. I love the third floor especially, probably that's, I'll find out, but anyway, uh, that's all I have.
When we're talking about, uh, short-term rentals, um, and, and sure, uh, not necessarily being specific, it would be for pilots that fits into the specific use plan. A short-term rental would fit in, in, in this, this requirement for a specific use plan permit?
Uh, short-term rental?
Is, it fits into that?
Yeah, I mean, short-term rentals are permitted.
And it's not, it's not specified, short-term rental for pilots?
No, correct.
Yeah, that's, that's, I think that's the point, I think it's a little bit confusing. Strictly for pilots, that's been very, very, uh, completely inclusive, so, uh, anyway, that's, that's my, that's my opinion.
Thank you, approve this? You're not approving short-term rentals, if not? That's not what you're trying, that's not what you're trying to...
This, this is for a specific use permit to allow you to, uh, to, to answer?
Yes.
Okay, end of the discussion, because everybody do need a motion and a second. Yes, sir.
I have one more question, because he said about the, the people he got on the property in University City. Like me, I have the property in two eighteen Rosewood Drive. The far we got in two thousand fifteen, my landlord, Aaron Blue Bernard, we rent to him. The property, he sent the property to a company, N C F R three, G one, two, three, L S C. I come to the city, contact this office, no number, no email, only email, only mailing address. How we can contact these people, so we resolve this problem?
When we take a short break, I'd be glad to talk about that, we'll, we'll get to a staff, that's it.
All right, thank you.
Six statement, but we need to go back on time to track for this particular, thanks, thanks for your, okay?
Thank you.
All right, do you approve, must we have a council adjourned, segment, uh, uh, Ms. Patrick, you need discussion? All right, call for the vote, that's it.
Post a motion, Councilmember Jerry?
Aye.
Councilmember?
Yes, oh.
Okay. I got you, though. Councilmember Ms. Patrick?
Aye.
Mayor President Bill speak?
Aye.
Councilmember Buck?
Aye.
Councilmember Bowman?
No.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Okay, thanks, okay, let's pass on. Let's move on to tab number C, discuss and to consider resolution nine fifty-four dash twenty twenty-three. It's a resolution of the City Council of the City, University City, approving a project for the University City Economic Development Corporation, as authorized by section five oh five one fifty-eight, Texas Civil Government Code, authorizing certain financial assistance to be used for targeted infrastructure located within the city and for lodging for effective date. Again, by the way, they have done, although we just passed, as the first rate, something comes up, she thinks it's important, but obviously, it's a better side of the nation. Okay, yes, Chris?
Thank you, Mayor. Before council today, their consideration is resolution nine fifty-four, that resolution approval that authorized the E C's Bowie Street Parking Lot project. Back in October of twenty twenty-two, the E C acquired one nineteen Estadiation. It's about a half-acre parcel located between East Lindbergh and Estadiation down near our aviation district. Uh, while the market hasn't allowed for the E C to acquire property adjacent to that property, uh, it's been determined by the E C that the best interim use for that property would be a public parking lot. Uh, the parking lot would serve as additional parking for existing businesses, for business and swimming business at three oh two Patrick Road, and even potentially residential gas parking for the development that you just heard today, and it would be in line with the twenty eighteen conference plan, both that Michael, uh, presentation as well. The contract would be for professional services with six S engineering, and they would provide the survey to design bid phase services and construction administration for that project. And the amount of the project, or of this contract, I'm sorry, is twenty thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. Uh, some of the things that we would address in the design of the project would be lighting. Lighting is not called out in this contract. Uh, public works actually is gonna work that separately. They did acquire some surplus light poles from the federal buyout program that they were a part of, and so we're looking to recycle that to, to light, um, the parking lot. Landscaping will be considered, um, a lot of that hopefully will be then announced, but we'll work with the design designer or architect to design that in, in, uh, the parking lot. And then also pedestrian connectivity, how the pedestrians will get from our parking lot to the adjacent surrounding businesses. Um, I am not in the business of developing parking lots. Randy has a lot more expertise in that, so he's gonna kind of, uh, be the project lead for this, and is here to answer any technical questions, if you have any related to parking lot.
Okay, can we go ahead and entertain a motion first, and then we'll do a discussion. Who, who, uh, who, uh, Jerry? Uh, let's, discussion. I'd like to, Chris, and, and, sorry, Ms. Patrick, I'll leave you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The way I understand this, this bill is that this is an interim use as a public parking location until further implementation of the aviation district master plan leads to it being put up for sales, for development, something like that, is that correct?
Yes, sir, if we're able to acquire adjacent properties, then the use could change. Interim could be two years, five years, ten years, twenty years, it's really at the E C's discretion.
Where does that property fit in the overall plan, the map for our vision plan of the future use for that location?
Sure, so the aviation plan as it was presented, that parcel is part of our town square. Like I had mentioned, the market hasn't allowed for us to acquire this... Like I mentioned, the market hadn't allowed for us to acquire those adjacent properties, but those pieces of the puzzle in the aviation district are really able to be moved around. It's not so important as where they are located as much as it is that they're located in the plan.
Thank you. And last question, Mr. Mayor. If you could clarify, public means free or public means available to the public at a fee?
There is no adamant at this time to charge for parking. It will be free.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So I have a couple of questions. I didn't have a single resident that was for this. So I would like, why can we not, if this is temporary, why can we not just do gravel and park at your own risk? Why does it have to be spent and spending all this money for something that's temporary? Is whatever when I get that.
We're not looking to do a concrete parking lot. It will be asphalt, so there's less of an expense there at first. Two, we're still wanting it to look nice and presentable. We're still planning on lining it. And like I said, interim could mean two years, five years, 10 years, 20 years. So if you're going to spend the money to do that, then it would be like it's a little nice.
But wouldn't it just be way cheaper just to throw down gravel? Am I wrong? Like just to throw down gravel and call it good?
Please fire emergency services. We want to have what's called an all-weather surface. That means it's something that they're being able to travel through at any time. And just plain rock or gravel a lot of times doesn't carry what they need, especially for fire trucks. Certainly doesn't carry the weight of a fire truck. So then you have issues with that. The other thing that you have to be concerned about when you are dealing with environmental issues, normally you do not want vehicles parked on rock or gravel because the oil and the condensation from their units drip into the ground and then there's a potential for an environmental issue. So we always like to have them on asphalt or concrete so that we can catch those liquids that protrude from all vehicles. And then that way we don't have an environmental contamination.
So from the residence aspect, it just feels like a very expensive project for like no benefit to the residents, other than possibly some people could park there. But if it was just gravel, they could also park there and it wouldn't cost the residents a lot of money. But I guess it's all down.
Sure. Do we have any rough cost estimate, what the course of construction would be?
We don't because we haven't this idea. We'll give the probable cost of construction at 60 points fine. Please, Randy, do you have a ballpark of what you think this would cost?
Not at this time. There's going to be, the engineer's designing, he'll come up with an estimate. But there's going to be a lot of this that's going to be recycled. You know, it will be.
Recycled asphalt.
Recycled base material and stuff that we incorporate. So we're going to do some of this in-house and then we will contract for the concrete work. It's asphalt work. But we will be, it'd be a cost plus with us there in-house. And so I like the, the cost, whatever we get from any of here, probably will cost the same as you.
Back to Ms. Bowman's consideration about the parking surface. So I call it recycled asphalt. So when we have old parking lots that we grew up at parks and other city facilities, we stockpile that. So Randy's intending to reuse that rather than buy new asphalt to reuse that asphalt for this one. So it is a cost savings to the city local.
It's just hard to approve something if you don't know how much it's going to cost in the end. So we approved $20,000 now, but we have no idea how much it's going to cost in the long run to tell the residents that it's worth spending another $20,000, $30,000, $100,000. I don't know because you don't know. So it makes it really hard to vote for something if you don't know what the full ticket's going to be for the residents, like.
But that's the purpose of doing the engineering study is to pay them to get us all of those cost estimates and design. And if that comes back and then at that time the E C and City Council thinks it's cost prohibitive, then you stop the project. If they think that there is a benefit to the parking with the dollar value that is placed on, they will decide to move forward with the project. So it's just, the first step is just figuring out what is the probable estimated cost of construction.
And $20,000 is normal for, like, that's normal, essentially, for a parking lot price?
This is a small parking lot, so yes. But this size parking lot, it is a bigger parking lot.
So if, if we come back to the 60%, with, they're going to give us the cost. And then at that point, if it's yea or nay, you're not paying for CA, you're not paying for bidding, you're not paying for all those fees. So you're not.
Right, just to design.
Just the admission. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We do a motion, this is a discussion. Let me call for the vote in place.
Counselor member Buck?
Aye.
Counselor member Jerry?
Aye.
Mayor President Goldspeak?
Aye.
Counselor member Bowman?
No.
Counselor member Patrick?
Aye.
Counselor member Vaughn?
No.
Passes the move on out to Ted number D, discussing and considering 2023, 2028 purchasing medical services in a local agreement with the city of Shirts Texas.
Uh, Mayor Council?
We have a special guest.
Yes, this is Chief Jason. He is the chief of the shirt EMS division. And he's going to be talking a little bit about your cooperation. And then we'll have some general discussion on the contract.
I apologize. I thought I was here to give CPR class. Every day, just impressions and now, well, I had to change my joke. I just, it's probably getting old. So Mayor, Council, I appreciate the opportunity to talk about E M S. We've had a long partnership, it's been great for us, with five ambulances transport to your residents. I also want to say that it's a great relationship with U C P V and U C Fire. So thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief. New chief, Brad, as well. So I'll try to make this brief. I'm passionate about E M S and I talk a lot. So please interrupt me if you have any questions about this at all. Five years ago, when we started this agreement, this is what we look like. That orange outline is our area. We are now a medium-sized, man, same 220 square, 230 square miles. And we serve a population of 150,000. This is what we look like today. So we added three trucks, one of them just right down the road at J D S A, San Antonio, Randolph. So every time we add another ambulance, that's good for U C because the truck here at U C stays here and runs U C halls. This is our call line by fiscal year. And that blue line is a call for service. And then the red line is transport. And you can see for the last couple of years, we have gotten crazy busy. Covid, we call it Covid year one, Covid year two, we're in Covid year three. We actually had to increase the calls, as you can see. And then we have come back firing with calls. This is a heat map of what we look like. We put ambulances where the calls are. And so you see that those heat maps, that's, we do a pretty good job of putting ambulances where it worked at business. If I isolate just University City, let's talk economy scale. So the University City residents have access to eight ambulances. And you can see how they're spread out across. And you can see on specific days where we actually had five ambulances inside the city limits of U C back in December, 11th, February, and March. In January, at 11 o'clock at night, we had three ambulances on separate calls in University City. February, four calls at 6 o'clock in the afternoon. And then again, in April, this, this was very simple to find, where we're just not running one ambulance in University City. We've had multiple ambulances running multiple calls in University City. You are second busiest city. This is where the calls are, the last three, just the years. Civil is coming up fast, so don't call 911, but if you need us, call us. Response time, so average over the last five years, you can see it's actually started to settle down a little bit over the last year and a half. About six minutes on average is our response time. Of course, we rely on U C Fire as well. Their response numbers get there first. You guys are well-trained, stabilized, patient, and then we get there and we'll transport it immediately. Let's talk ambulances fees. We haven't changed our fees in over 10 years. They've been pretty steady, but they've been very expensive. Average ambulance bill is $1,500, which is a lot. We realize that. We try to keep fees low. We try to keep our tax subsidies low as well. We are actually running, from the city of Shirts, as an enterprise home. So we're not a general public department, we're an enterprise home. And you can see the fees there, so they range, like I said, $1,500 and it's also about a house as well. So why is E M S, I get this question all the time, and this slide explains it the best. About 30% of the time, we don't transport. We can't kidnap people. So we go to your house, they say, hey, just want to check you out. And you need to go to the hospital or have to go to the hospital. We make our recommendation. But 30% of the time, we don't transport. Well, unfortunately, we don't, we can't sit and bill anybody. There's no insurance company that's going to give us any money for refusals. So 30% of our calls, we get help from. 25, 25% for our area, people have Medicare, Medicaid.
Mr. Mayor, if you said this, I'll move if we have.
Yes.
In your mind, thanks very much. You said that 30% refuse transport and you get no money for that. If somebody called 911, somebody obviously requested your services, right? Whether you transport them or not, they've failed themselves of your service.
That's correct.
Do you not even send them a bill?
Yeah, let me correct that. If I go back to one side, there's some $800, $200 if we do something, we give some type of medication. So let's say it's a diabetic. We start an ID, give some sugar during their ID, and they wake up and they're like, nah, I don't want to go to the hospital. There is a fee for that, it's $200. But if we go to your house and you're like, hey, I think I'm having a heart attack. We hook you up to our heart monitor and we determine you don't have one and you don't want to go to the hospital by ambulance, there's no bill for that. We don't bill.
All right. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, about 25% of your residents have Medicare, Medicaid. And because we accept Medicare, Medicaid, we accept what the federal government gives us. And so for those who have Medicare, we get about just over $400. Remember, ambulance bills are $1,500. So we have to write off that $1,100. And then for those who have Medicaid, it's just over $200. So again, we have to write off $1,300 for those types of calls. So 47% make up the, rather than the last calls. So Counselor Kurt, you were asking, what does E M S stand for?
None.
Well, I'm not going to be serious, but you have expensive medical services. It's, it's very expensive to run E M S. Easy math, it's a million dollars an ambulance is what you're looking at. And if you, so if you budget a million dollars per ambulance, then you buy yourself an ambulance service. But you can see the cost, just in the last five years, it's skyrocketed. So we were looking at just the purchase of an ambulance and some of the equipment, about $379,000 five years ago. Now it's over $500,000 per ambulance. And so you can see those prices and prices. And it's basically emergency room on wheels. The other question I get, there's two more questions I get, is what does an ambulance call actually cost? So again, doing some easy math, in this year 22, my expenses were $1.6 million. We ran just over 13,000 calls. You buy those two numbers together, $862. So every time we run a call, it costs us $862. So those are our expenses. That's what the easiest math I can do. Now, cost of readiness versus use of service is the other thing I get. So why, so University City pays money for us to provide E M S. Well, then why do we bill residents? So I look at this as a cost of readiness versus use of service issue. So you're paying for a cost of readiness. You're caught here, you're paying for two paramedics to sit in their station and wait for that call, just like the fire departments. And, and then sometimes we're calling. And so that's a use of service. How I can compare this to this, the water departments. So the water departments are paid for by your tax dollars, like use of service. So if Chief Parton wanted to fill his pool and he wants to spend that money on filling his pool and water, he can help her pool. So, and I don't want to fill a pool. Well, then he needs to pay for that extra water use. And that's kind of similar with E M S. So we're there providing cost of readiness and that's what you guys are paying for. And then if we are used, then we do bill for that. We do try to bill insurance companies, Medicare, Medicaid as well. We will work with folks as well. Just full disclosure, this is what's all of our cities. And we also have the county contract for water moving county. And then we have the base as well. So full disclosure, that's what everybody gives us. About 35% of our operating costs come from what I call a tax subsidy, U C subsidy, the county and the base. Even the city of Shirts has to pay their fair way as well. And it's based on our cap but not on. So I even invoice our city quarterly as well, just like the universal city. So that's what those costs are. And then, of course, the other 65% is the ambulance revenue is what we're collecting. Real briefly about inflation. We've all felt this. You go to the grocery store and, and it's, we're paying some pretty incredible prices. Same thing with our medical supplies, ambulances. You know, it takes two and a half years to buy an ambulance. Right now, it's, everything is delayed with chassis and chips and vehicles and chassis. And we've had a huge increase in inflation. Fortunately, luckily, we're seeing that inflation numbers come down, thankfully. But we're not seeing the prices come down. We're seeing inflation come down, but the prices are still at the same height. I think I guess if you just fill that inflation, we'll build it up too. Our current agreement ends the end of September. What it says is we adjust the population, we do this by estimates, which has been difficult. Since this only updates every 10 years. And back in 2020, in the midst of Covid, I was hoping it would be a little bit more accurate. But we found they did a little bit too, too high of estimates in some cities. The other part of the agreement says that we will increase of the capita based on the cost of inflation to better compare services, not to exceed 3%. So that gives you some budgeting numbers to work with. You know, we're going to adjust your population and you know we're not going to go over 3% on that per capita number. This figure 23, we're looking at it was $16.10 per residence. So for, for your population, that's how we got the number of that 345, 554, 30. And that's the current agreement. Like I said, it ends, we end this September. So even though we can go up on 3% and March is usually where I see that number and that cost of inflation compared to the year before. And you can see last March, the actual number was 2.9%. We only went up 2%. And I guess I could have thrown in that 2.9% as well. The March before that, it was 2.7, we went up 2%. We didn't go up the max. We could have done two things up, trying to keep costs below for everyone. In March 2020, fortunately, inflation was 5.5. So we didn't go up the max 3% on that. Before that was 2.2, we went up 2%. March 2018, it was 2.1, we did 2%. And we also adjusted the population as well. We are looking to have another agreement, five years, and it's not going to change too much. We did have a 6% increase in our per capita. So it's gone from 6 to 10 to 1707, mostly because of inflation. We'd like to continue to adjust population estimates as well, but not to exceed the cost of inflation for medical care services 3%. For U C, we actually adjusted your population down, trying to then adjust that to where it looks a little bit better of a number. So you're actually seeing a decrease in, in E M S, almost $3,000. So it'd be 342, 742. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
You mentioned that you're an enterprise fund, so I pulled up your financial tickets. And you had a pretty good year for 2022. So I'm just looking, I'm just thinking, is there been any kind of discussion about over the next five years, if you're all over, if you make more money, that that can be shared among all the participants? That we want money back, but I mean to, to lessen some of those cost increases over time?
So we would, yes, I would think anything's on the table. And what we would do is we would, like what we did with the, with the cost of inflation, just not go up to what we could have, if that makes any sense. I will tell you, I don't know what is a good year for us. I actually had to write off some, some bad debts at our city council tonight that I got out of. Thank you. But I write off on 2.6 million dollars a year in bad debts. So that's.
Which would be included in this.
It is included in that.
That's how much you're up, nine and a half million, and you added about 1.3.
On that.
So it's like, I mean, I'm not trying to, like, it's good. Rather you have that than being the whole. But I just wonder over it, since we're walking in over five years, if there's any opportunity to. Like that did you come out really well in that five years that we get consideration?
If I had my way, I would charge the cities anything. If I was collecting them out that way. And we do, I'm bringing the black, I'm in the gray as well. I buy ambulances with cash as well. And that's new for the last three years, as opposed to financing them over five to seven years like we did in the past. So I try to basically, I use our budget like I do my personal finances as well. I don't like debt, and I do the second part of our budget.
Everybody else is paying seventeen oh seven, a resident, so we can't-
Call our citizens. Our card, yes. Call our citizens. So it's fair, but never, and how we fight about, even the city officials as well.
In the contract, it talks about dispatch that has to go through you. Can you just talk to that briefly? So if somebody called nine-one-one, where is the call going and how does it get to you?
Sure, it doesn't have to go through us. And how it works is a little archaic, honestly. So you guys actually dispatch us. Our ambulance here is that. Our dispatch center is listening as well, and they dispatch us as well. Now, what we do here, though, is we also provide pre-arrival instructions. So if you have a case where somebody is trying to do CPR, you can actually forward that call to our dispatch center, and we will give them pre-arrival instructions on how to do CPR or how to do Medicare. So all of our dispatches are turning that way.
So our dispatchers are answering first? Is that what's happening, or?
Yes.
And then they're calling you if it's a ambulance call?
They can transfer that nine-one-one call, and it's very seamless. But they're dispatching your rescue, so your fire department, so there's no delay. If our ambulance is in house, we hear that as well, and we start making our way to the ambulance as well. And then our dispatch there is listening to the radio. When they hear that, then they dispatch that to the CAD. So that way, all of the clients are documented accordingly.
So I talked to a lot of residents and asked them how they felt about this, about the EMS. And I just wanted to let you know, every single person said, you guys are wonderful, amazing. They've had nothing but wonderful experiences, and they're very much looking forward to doing another five-year contract. So I just thought you should know that I had nothing but glowing reviews for the short EMS. And I'm also used you for my own kid, and it was amazing, so.
Let's get to here. So the complaints we get, we get no money for our patient care. Our paramedics are great, such as the second floor firefighters. It's usually a part of the bill. And it's about every other month we get type complaints about the bill, and it's unfortunate. Now, we are actually looking at, like I said, city sheriffs, the sheriffs have our separate ambulances. We are actually looking at adding some additional, we know, we're talking to you, of course, and serving these communities as well, like that as well. Because there is an issue every once in a while, it's like, well, why is sheriffs here transporting? You actually have to explain that, so.
Something I might add as a pitch for our fire department and their trainees, or you use EMTs, that a lot of our fires, actually, and most of our older firefighters for sure, are also EMTs. So that's why if they're not in station or they're on a call or further away when the call goes in, that's why our fire department can go and address that residence needs first and draw area back.
So that's actually something Jason and them just helped us do two years ago. We got us our first responder license. So sheriffs was instrumental in getting all of the agencies registered with the state, all the first responders. So all of our guys are all trained, and we carry our own ones as well as first responders. So that was a tough shit, so. I may say that, but it's true.
I had the opportunity recently to get an up-close tour, kind of open an ambulance, and really learn all of the things that are in there and all the capabilities. And I have to say, I was really blown away. And your comment that you said very quickly, it's like an emergency room on wheels, really has the ability to service an emergency room on wheels. It was very impressive.
Yeah, one of the things we're now carrying is whole, which is just incredible to think about. So that's usually maybe, thinking about maybe helicopter, I don't know, you know, habits that we can give as well, so. Well, I think we have mutual collaboration here, so I'll be glad to entertain. Thank you for the second. Jared, second. Will be further discussion there?
I'd like to ask you a comment, Mr. Mayor, sir. Thank you for coming out tonight, I appreciate it. I would just like to say that I'm putting my full support behind this, because three hundred forty-two thousand, seven hundred-ish dollars to provide the residents of our great city with a capable, ready, and responsive EMS service is something that I fully support. So thank you very much for you coming out here and entertaining us.
All right, let's go through the book.
House Member Darian?
Hi.
Mayor Boebel Goldbeak?
Hi.
House Member Buck?
Hi.
House Member Bowman?
Aye.
House Member Patrick?
Aye.
House Member Vaughn?
Aye.
Mr. Pastor, I'll tell you what, we've gone two hours now. Let's go ahead and take it for five minutes straight.
Excuse me.
I didn't see what you were talking about.
Collecting those shots. I think you didn't see, well.
All right. All right, let's move on then to tab number two. We just got to consider strike and open cooperation agreement and business associate agreement, Southwest Texas Regional Advisory Council. That stands for?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is actually a software program that is used by the fire department for patient care as well as fire emergency resource tracking. And so this particular contract gives them the use of that service, that's the first part. And then the second act of it is a business associate agreement. And that's basically dictates how the data that's provided is for technical. Any questions for Chief Pennington?
Do you want anything to add, Chief?
Just, one of the great things that we're, the image trend is who they're transferring from, which was to have a PCR before. Well, what's going to be great about this is also going to take place in our emergency report, which is our RMS system. So it's really great that we'll be able to get rid of that issue of the body of services, and now we'll be able to have it all in one location, which is great. And at a lot cheaper cost.
Let me go ahead and entertain a motion from, is there any questions?
Mr. Pennington?
Justice Officer Patrick.
Second.
Justice Officer Darian. Okay, only for discussion. So it's going to be less, much more, much more cross?
Less.
Okay, let's call for the vote, that way.
House Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
House Member Darian?
Aye.
Mayor Boebel Goldbeak?
Aye.
House Member Buck?
Aye.
House Member Bowman?
Aye.
House Member Vaughn?
Aye.
Mr. Pastor, let's move on then to, there's another note tab, about tab four. We're going to have a public safety presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. As you well know, when some of you were out on the streets knocking on doors and getting to know our residents of our city a little bit better, one of the comments that came up, and it actually almost comes up every year, is about safety. And, you know, it's a nebulous term. What do people mean when they say they don't feel safe in their home? They don't feel safe in their neighborhood? You know, they can sound, we all know that, so. The general discussion that we have is, you know, maybe we can have a public safety presentation. So I have asked our two chiefs in residence to go ahead and put a presentation for you, which they will do, and then, of course, we'll answer questions for them.
Good evening, council, citizens, and staff. Thank you. So we weren't really sure the direction of what council had intended by this. So what we thought we would provide is like a state-of-the-art type of addressing, giving you some rundown on some resources that we required in the last year or two, some statistics on call volume, some of those types of things. And entertain questions if that sounds okay for what you have planned.
It's really difficult to anticipate your questions. So we'll see what we can do, trying to answer all your questions. You wanted to start talking about our book?
Yes, so primarily out of ARPA funding, and with some general fund supplemental stuff. Most of our resources we've acquired include new MTCs, mobile data terminals, one of the motor, mobile data computers, PD smart board for updates for emergency operations, because it is our ELC for training for several uses. The exterior fencing to protect the last remaining generator that we had here on site in the back electrical toward our city. New in-car camera redacting software and warranties. ATVs for our vehicles, which we've deployed on several occasions. We issued probably three or four life-saving awards in the last year or two. I wanted to make a comment earlier on the EMS portion that, in addition to their EMTs, we have several paramedics and one nurse that several have received a life-saving award because of the swift response as a result of our response times as well. The shade pro car shades, which are preventing our equipment from deteriorating and having to be replaced so quickly, and obviously keeping cars to cooler temperatures and turn hail with all the top storms that we have, with some of the warming concerns. We've had two officers of mental health and a traffic unit, which traffic unit has only been applied on a part-time basis, because we're not fully staffed quite yet, but we're working diligently and almost there. The flare storage that we need to have for our flares to keep them out of the building. A new warrant vehicle, which was approved and purchased through courts, but also, I believe, it might have been, perhaps not, that might have been a general fund line. I think comes out of court security. PD vehicle cameras, the fence pro shade that we have so that we can have some discretion on what we're carrying in and out of our building, and also to provide a little more discretion for persons that we might be transporting things in that future. So we're not in the business of humiliation. We have one shield when I arrived here, one shield. And I know that we all know the fallout surrounding Yvalley, correct? And I was, how do you want to look at this, fortunate or unfortunate enough to have been there shortly after it came to a close? One of the observations we made was that we were the only agency to have a shield. Now, we know that there was at least one inside, okay? I'm not here to make that. But I was appalled that no other agencies had deployed ballistic shields. One of the first purchases we've made when we got here was additional shields. We had one. It was used for high-risk warrant service, and we realized quick that we needed one in every car. So we immediately staffed one level-three ballistic shield, which is operated for every unit that we have. A new ATV, which we use, obviously, to creep the majority of the time, but for special events and certainly for the suicidal subjects that wander down, of course, the civil creek, producing kids that we get down there periodically for criminal mischief at the golf course or the frisbee golf. It's used for looking for transients in some of the more difficult areas to get to. IPAC headrest kits in every one of our cars as well. Those contain stop-the-bleed-type stuff, deterrent kits, things of that nature. Again, in preparation for active shooters. It's not a, it's when, we've subscribed to several montras here. One of them is lucky, it's an opportunity to be preparation. So we believe in being prepared, and CM Turner has been extremely gracious in her support of that endeavor, again, to provide excellence in service to our citizens and make sure that we're ready to answer the call when it comes out. New patrol unit shotguns, our previous ones were twenty-five-plus years old. They were here long before I got here the first time in two thousand and two. Cut several new ballistic vests, not a full turnover, but several new ones to accommodate the new employees. A reaching tool, a kinetic reaching tool that we've used several times, so a high-risk warrants. And that will prevent our officer from going out on workers' comp, or throwing a shoulder, or a back, or a knee, or a hip, or anything else, as you can imagine, swinging a forty-pound ram into a door. It creates significant twisting and torquing issues. This kinetic tool, you hold it in place, you launch it, it blows the door open for us. I say blow, it's not, it's not a, it's not a charge. And you just punch it out, it smacks the door open, it works fantastic. We did a house apartment up here on a very serious call with a two-year-old that was critically injured and will remain halfway for family violence. Stepdad or daddy was beaten on a two-year-old. Anyway, when we served his warrant, blue suit around here, by the way, disgraced our country, in the Air Force. But nonetheless, we used it up there, it had already broke, and it worked fantastic. That'll save the city money in the long run, and it'll serve us well and provide a faster injury, a more guaranteed treatment. Of course, we'll door entry training, Chief. I think I left out a mine, I didn't meet you. That was a joint one that we got together, and Chief, I'll turn it over to you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Thank you for having me.
You speak a lot, a lot slower, I gotta tell you. Just, hey, I have trouble listening that fast.
He's just as high-strung as I am, most of the time. I just wanted to kind of mention, obviously, it's really hard for us to anticipate the questions that she may have. Obviously, the fire department, we aim towards being transparent, obviously. Our jobs are difficult. I was fortunate enough to work with this group for the last five years as the assistant chief. And now I get to work with the capacity as the chief. But we're running record calls. Our guys are extremely busy. On top of running all the calls, we're in the community. We have fire prevention, our K-nine dogs in all the schools. We just got done running Hero's Camp. We had twenty-three kids in the fire station all week. Some of you I got to see at our graduation on Saturday. So we're just like all the other agencies. But when it comes to the equipment, we're very fortunate here in University City, that we've been able to leverage some of that ARPA funds to get us some of that state-of-the-art equipment. And some of those things that we were able to do this year is get that shoot time out the door. We were able to pick that up through station alerting. Sherps EMS has a station alerting system in our station. It's called a PNEON system. They take about eighty thousand dollars to have that system put in. But it only dispatches Sherps EMS. So we did our homework when we studied. And our guys had taken little lights off of the vehicle and put them up in the gym and some other places where, when the tones went off, it would light these old lights that they had to try to get their attention when the music's on and they're lifting weights. We made do for so many years. We were fortunate enough to use some of that money, this station alerting system in there. Now it activates these guys no matter where they're at. Bathroom, bunk rooms, gymnasiums when they're working out. And it gets them out the door quicker on that call, because not only do they see the light come on, it's giving us pre-alerts that are coming out on our phone and in the station almost a minute and a half before national dispatch sets a note, which is getting our shoot time out the door much, much quicker. It's been great. We did it for about thirty-six thousand dollars versus eighty thousand with that PNEON system. And it does everything that they were able to do. Obviously, Chief spoke on the mobile, the CAD systems now. We didn't have that when I started. We were pen and paper on everything, patient reporting. We have CAD, we're getting real-time, up-to-date info as we're responding to the call. We have sent all of our guys this last year through the, Chief, I don't know if you mentioned that, mobile-integrated AI art training, which is the active shooter. We've been over there, obviously, in light of Yvalley. It's been very critical to make sure that our city is prepared. That emergency was to arise in our city, we're ready.
So prior to sending them, if I may say something, sure. Prior to sending them to that school, which, by the way, we partnered with DPS in Sherps School District. That was one of our goals when I arrived here, was take advantage of a couple of these vacant schools we had on the south end. Sherps was accommodating with Rose Garden, we've had a car launch for the last year, and have ran nothing but active shooter training through that school. And the air, the air class, which is their active, it's been active response, engaged, sir. It's a cooperative response, it's a great response, thank you. Prior to that, though, we had had on the books planned for our agencies, collective agencies, to do a joint active shooter training, which we did at Coronado in concert with their in-service training teachers and with the support of the principal there, where we conducted a full-scale exercise utilizing some of our employees and several of our citizens police academy volunteers to conduct a readiness assessment. And so those are the types of things that we are doing for the city in the future development.
Nice collaboration between PD and fire to make sure our guys have the right equipment. Just then, but on the city, making sure we're at ready stage.
Fire now has ballistic vests and helmets so that they can go to these warm zones and start treating folks. That was important to us, and a great tool. We've used it real-time with shootings that we had last year. In fact, after the budget workshop last year, I ended up sleeping in my office on the cobblestone with me from Castle Hills, because we had shooting at ten o'clock. So we wrapped up in here, we went, we're at shooting over at Sable, it was gangsters out of combat. Then the combat fire was able to suit up and come into that warm zone as we covered them. The scene was not entirely secure, but there was a person leaving out there. So just some things that pay dividends in role application.
We were able to collaborate the addition of that mental health officer in the fire department as well. So not only do we have, as a matter of fact, we just got a compliment on hand today. The guys are doing exceptional work out there in these mental health. And not only are we seeing an increase in mental health in our community, we're also seeing an increase in mental health in, you know, obviously, in our public service.
And it wasn't just your standard run-of-the-mill kudos. There was so much emotion in this email that you could know that the mom was crying, she wrote it. Because that's her fifteen-year-old son that, in years past, would just kind of get manhandled to stop the situation, where our proactive efforts with the mental health unit have gone out, established the reports with some of these folks who've identified in our cities. And when we arrived and he was in full-on crisis mode there in the house of, trying to, sold their number child, number sibling, he recognized our officer Todd and officer Loki Me, firefighter Todd, excuse me, and officer Loki Me. And immediately, we went to work with him and calmed down on site. It was fantastic, you can read the emotion in that. And that's just one, is we're doing that with all the folks that we have dealt with on emergency detentions. We're finding resources outside of our city never found before. And on that note, this is important to note, we are on, again, the call volume is record-level stuff. And that's not just us, that's across the country. When you go in liberal DAs, and I don't care about that stuff, but the application at the booking, at intake, embolism criminals, and so there's more of it. Our arresting still has to take place, there still has to be a police response and a fire response as needed to serve calls. But the lion's share of our resources are going to the emergency detention, to the crisis, the mental crisis situations that we're facing. We are on par right now at the midterm of the year to break our previous record. We are on par right now at the midterm of the year to break our previous record of 154, about 50. So a 25% increase is over, the compliment on, I mean, approach that number very fast, if you want to jump in there directly off the thing. It's a substantial increase, and one that we've seen coming, and we've taken efforts to combat, if you will, in the exact use of that word, but it's a big change.
We have the appropriate equipment, we've added a policeman and a fireman every year, the last couple of years, one additional. With the traffic cop, it will obviously propose the business of progress.
But they take a large portion of our resources because they require us to transport them to an appropriate psychiatric ward that is dictated by, and I forget the name of it, it's a dispatch center that does it just for that stuff, and tells you which hospital best suited for that type of patient, and it could be on the other side of San Antonio. So it takes our folks out of commission for an hour and a half, two hours, almost daily, at least every other day with five numbers that we're on.
So the mental health officer, their job is to either be the first responder for that particular situation, or to take the officers who are stuck in that situation, and relieve them, put them back in the streets, and then a lot of officers can carry out and follow through. How do we do it now? Two, one in the police and one in the fire? Those were added and included on the budget.
So we're seeing something new this year too with, I don't know if y'all have paid attention to the MAC building that's over there in Morgan's Wonderland. They have put on, San Antonio Fire put on a full-time mental health officer in there. What happens is when they reach out to the MAC for that mental health type of help, they've been referring them to us. So we've started seeing referrals, and quite a few in the last year since the MAC has been up. Of residents that live in our community that reach out for help from the MAC, and then they refer them to us, and then I pass that on to our mental health. He reaches out to that family in our area and says, hey, with fire department, do you have any needs or any concerns, anything? Some of them maybe they have children that has some type of a disorder like this gentleman we're talking about, and we put that in the cat notes. Hey, aggressive, but he has a rapport with officer time. Those notes become key.
And those are real-time, if you are a dispatch center, if you're an MDC. Additionally, I'd like to mention that the mental health officers are not just for our customers' external power organizations, they're for our team internal too, they're part of our peer-to-peer network. And as anybody knows, as I've told the citizens police academy on numerous crimes, law enforcement per capita leaves the nation in four categories. I'm not proud, I'm not proud about everything about this profession, I'm as passionate as you kids. But we lead it in chemical dependency, we lead it in divorce rates, we lead it in, I always say this backwards, but it's in high mortality rates. We die young and fast and often sadly. Your average age lifespan is 62, and that's a generous age, it's usually 59, honestly, they just give it 62. So they can keep pushing our amortized retirement out, actually I think Team Marissa is 72, that's not happening for your act of cop, it's 62. And finally, suicide. There's something inherently wrong with the profession and the extended exposure to life force tragedies, right? We know this to be a fact, and so those officers also serve in that capacity internally to our folks and I struggle with it against it. And we see plenty of pain in stuff out here from everything you can imagine, the family violence, to murders, to shootings, to carnage at crash scenes. And those aren't one-offs, those are anomalies, you know, we're a busy city, a busy suburb.
So Chief mentioned the adding of the addition of fire fighters and police officers each year. Our guys operate at five-man minimum staffing, there's some rules that we need to adhere to through NPA, that's that two-in, two-out rule. So we can't drop below that five-man minimum staffing. So we've said it for years, look, if we can keep that minimum staffing at five, and we bring that additional firemen on each year, it has cut our overtime, there's built-in overtime naturally based on the fire fighter schedule. But the additional overtime that we, because of minimum staffing, we have watched that number decrease every year by adding those two additional firemen. And obviously this year we're coming back and asking to finish that off, and that'll balance out that three shifts. And I may, obviously we can't make overtime go away, but if we keep decreasing, it's a win for us, sure there is. We're very thankful that you've been helping support.
Thanks, thank you, Chief.
Any specific comments anybody would like to add, if you want them to be responded to?
Well, I'd like to apologize to you guys for making a cut, like, kind of my request.
No, sir, no problem.
And making you say this late, so I apologize, sorry.
No problem.
I know my police academy buddies up here probably know all this, but I don't. So my goal was to hopefully hear you tell us a little bit of what your policing strategy is for the city. And in the reports that are usually in our packets, I don't really know exactly how to understand it, but you've got the five districts. And do you track response times by district, or do you try to have an officer in each district, or how do you manage that?
A little of both, a little of both, yes, sir, I mean, we also hotspot police, right? We know our trouble areas, we know our higher-volume areas. So yes, a little bit of all three, we certainly don't have control eyes in every district. So at some point, there's officers on every shift, getting through every district, and certainly we shoot for every street. But that's sometimes difficult to do when you're chasing calls. Our overall call volume, not just merchant tensions, is on record pace as well, which includes, you know, all the other calls that we do get. Whether it's transients, whether it's social services, whether it's counseling somebody, whether it's arrest, whether it's criminal mischief, you know, all the other calls aggregated. So yes, to all of that, and if you wanted to ask about general philosophy, the first and foremost thing we do is hire the right folks. Jim Collins, you're the right people, and human resource is not the greatest asset, the right human resources are. I spend endless amount of time at the local police academy, police academies where I also run them in adjunct. And recruiting for our city, we start with hiring the right folks, you're the right human resources, are your best asset. And so we get the right mentality here, status quo doesn't work here. Start proactive policing, community policing, and minded folks, with high integrity, high character folks, and that's what we look for. So it starts there, the compliment on. And then from there, again, it goes to bringing value to our team. And that value comes in a number of forms, it comes in traffic enforcement, it comes in foot patrols, it comes in community relationships, it comes in throwing a football with a child, you know, wherever you might happen to pass by and see it or shoot another somewhere. So the philosophy is a large umbrella, and it encompasses a multitude of approaches that I think over time we have seen that is the right approach. Partnering with the community, the greatest form of policing we have are the citizen phone calls that we don't get that often. That we encourage incessantly, in every document we send out, in every Facebook post, you know, or everything, please follow us, please notify the police of anything suspicious. If you're contemplating calling us, it's already too late, you should have called. You know, that type of messaging is going on constantly, because y'all can be the eyes and the ears, there were places that we can't, we can't put a cop on every street, every minute of the day. We can't be everywhere, we have a finite number of them, as you know, four on shift, usually sometimes four. And for a busy suburb, that's a demand. But one that we're holding down, we're getting backlog on the CID end, the investigative end on the back end, because patrol, we got CID. Has patrol calls going up, guess what else goes up? CID call, CID work, an effort on the back end. We have the same number of detectives that we had in O2 when I started, that we had 20 years before then, three. And our call volume has gone up exponentially since then, obviously. And last year I came to you for a detective, I'm not trying to jockey for that, I'm just simply saying last year I came for a detective, it got marginally close to getting approved. It was not, I will be asking for that resource again this year in hopes that this presentation and faces you may have learned or gleaned since last year will have paid dividends in that regard, so that we can better show our citizens and our shareholders.
Can you upset update where we are in staffing, are we, all of this will be authorized full?
So we're authorized 34, I'm asking for a 35th, we're authorized 34, one of those is the ARCA, and one's a traffic unit, of course. We probably are sitting at 31, I say probably, we have three, it's kind of dynamic and fluid, we have three in FTO. We've got two in the academy right now, we're looking to send another, so I can sit there and do the math. It's about 31 that we have currently that are cops, three in FTO, they're sworn, but three of them are in FTO, so we're probably at 29. Those should graduate in about a month, and will be released on their FTO duties, and that'll get us to about 32. And then that will be what we normally know as our normal full, and then there's the two additional from last year. So 32 will be a win for us, and I feel compelled to tell you this. University City ain't losing recruiting value, I'm here to tell you right now, our efforts over there, we get the best of the best, and every other agency knows you. And none of them work as hard as we do to do that. I set the hook that these folks here reel it in. They reel it in when these folks are attending swearing-in ceremonies that we have, and the rest of the city team comes out to it. They reel it in when all the stuff I'm telling at the academy, they get here on a ride out, and they go, man, she posted both. I would say something else, I apologize. They see that it's actually living and breathing true, and with the passion that I bring to that academy, man, there's no denying. You know when someone means what they're saying. So that's about where we're at, we're winning the war, other agencies are not so fortunate. There's, you know, numerous agencies that are down 20 and 30%, we're not there. I mean, we're there right now, but the folks we have in the queue bring us out of that, so thank you.
And are we losing any turnover lines or?
The only ones we have lost, the compliment on, and I'm proud enough, proud to say this, are the ones that deserve to wear our patch of backs. We haven't lost anybody to a sister agency except one that wasn't welcome here in town at home, and one of the local sister agencies in Moorestown. But I have high standards, I have high expectations for our police, y'all deserve it, your citizens still deserve it, your constituents deserve it. The staff here deserves it, and they're going to get it in our lives.
Okay, one more question that I'll, you know, is quite unpopular one, but I know that, like, BILO does some of dispatch, and Shirts does several of us. In your opinion, what downside would there be to one of them, you know, our dispatch work?
So I've lived that as a police officer, as, so has chief here, and the downside is first and foremost is going to be response times. Oftentimes, there's a call tree that's associated with that because their call volume goes up, so they try to make it more efficient on their end through call trees. Castle Hills looked at doing this when I was there, Bear County was the only option they had at the time. And call volume, or excuse me, response times went from about three and a half minutes, we're at about four, if we're a little bigger city, which is very fast. And by national standards, it is three times as fast, maybe four times as fast. And with the population of ours, a sensitive population, insensitive, I mean, an aging population, response time as I get older, as part of the time becomes undefeated, I know that I want a faster response time. So response time would be the first concern that I would have. And then we have a longer list, and chief can speak to some of those things while I pull that up.
I've been fortunate, Councilman, to work for a couple of cities who have transferred their dispatch centers and have somebody else who's been going. I challenge you to listen to the services they allow, so like Converse, for instance, Scouter, they dispatch one to their county. Their residents, in their time of need, they need emergency services, they pick up the phone, they go to what they call call takers. Those call takers say, do you need police, fire, and MS? And then it's that call taker's job to determine where that call goes from there. So there's a delay while this is all happening. Sometimes they even wait on hold while they're screaming, need help, they go into a queue where they get to put on hold, then they get transferred. And then they say, okay, we're getting you to fire, we get fire. Now fire has to call us and get us going on the call, so there's a huge terrain at that time. When I worked in the sheriff's office before I was at Kendall County, they gave up dispatch immediately to the city of burning. Every one of the cities or counties that I've worked for in my years, 30-something years on the service, had all regretted. Once you give up that dispatch center, it's extremely hard to bring it back, and they realized at that time that it was a horrible decision. And now it wasn't cost-effective to reopen.
I worked there as well, chief and I were there together a long time ago for a brief period of time. I was on the Birmingham PD side, he was on the Kendall County SO side, the long-horford side. I worked there, you know, I felt there, like, I heard, we rolled great together, they weren't a priority, Birmingham PD was a priority. University City doesn't become the priority if we're not around dispatch there.
Nobody's going to take care of your city the way that you take that of your city. When I was in Addison County as an emergency manager, I actually saw them wrapped up in a pursuit and forget to set off the tones for a fire call when there was a fire going on. There was two dispatchers, both extremely involved in a pursuit, they took a 911 call for a fire and got caught up in the call, and this one thought this one dispatched it, this one thought this one dispatched it. In all reality, they missed that call, they never got this much.
Additionally, I want to talk to some efficiencies that go away. Efficiencies investigations, when our detectives can walk down the hall and run somebody right away and have a real-time criminal history in front of them. Deficiencies in fusion intelligence, Tlets access, regional bolotins and bolos, teleties, weather updates, applicant processing. We lose out on the fair metro grants that provides most of our equipment at dispatch center. That dispatch center runs primarily for just the cost of salary, so when you look at outsourcing that cost, minus the cost of your current salaries, you're down to $170,000 perhaps, somewhere in that range. Not a large sum of money for the response time and all the benefits the citizens gain by that, as well as the efficiency that our officers gain in serving those citizens. Furthermore, we have, we have in the past, and we used to do it when I was at Castle Hills, dispatch for other agencies. I had an agency reach out to me recently as I just took over the presidency of the Aluminary Police Association, and asked what we could do that for. Today, we've kind of negotiated a price, we brokered a price internally, not with this external agency yet, that also would further offset any costs the dispatch center has, and allow us to staff it with another officer. We're already remodeling, which is long overdue, to account for a third console because our call volume has gone up, so that the additional console will be there. So we're looking at some of these other remedies to offset some of the costs there and bring in greater value to that dispatch center. You know, we have a saying, good is fine, less better is available, and our folks have heard it to be said twice today. Was it at breakfast, or again at lunchtime, somewhere in that vicinity, when we were having some conversations. So we value the input, we value the dialogue, but we're always working, you know, with value as well, just so you know, we never rest on our laurels.
I would ask you to talk to some of the other chiefs that are working in some of these other cities that are using the BILO dispatch, and early conscious dispatch. And see how they feel about it, because the chief's meetings and stuff that I've been at there, they've all not really been happy with the service. I think that if anything, if we don't look at cost effectiveness for our city, making sure we're taking care of our city in the way that we have been with our quick response times, we should consider being in that case, taking on other agencies, to say, we'll make sure we're taking care of our folks, but we'll also dispatch.
Two points, real quick, two points. Our dispatch center transcends the entire city, animal control, public work certainly, fire, it's not just the first responders. Transcends the entire city, walk-ins, just the other day, we had a walk-in, a dog bite, it was an attack, a duplo-ious attack. Grandson sicced his Belgian Malinois on his grand, that Belgian Malinois was attacked, oh, yeah, it's very bad, Councilman Buck, I know you know what that is. It's the ones you see on cops and stuff that are just crazily athletic and have the biting, you know, the biting strength of no other, like, no other animal. Anyway, almost took his dog off. They knew that there would be somebody in this building when they got here, and it was after hours, I happened to be still there, it was about 7:00 o'clock. That's one of thousands of examples, there were people that walked in a while ago. Did you have something to add on how efficient it is for you, Randy, I think you mentioned something, I forget?
Like, getting rid of dispatch, I would have to, for public workers, have to contract out a third party to answer my calls early, and they charge by their calls. So that would be animal control, streets, parks, everything and anything, and they read from the script. So they're reading from the script, then goes to wherever I own a call, and then they got the answers to all the questions. So it's a domino effect, how it affects.
I believe they're monitoring all of our firemen in the city too, because it's a central power center. So if that was the goal, we would have to have a dedicated third party monitoring all of that fire.
That was the other point I wanted to make, the chief, for the EMS, spoke to a point here earlier. He said because our dispatch center dispatches fire and police right away, their boxes, their ambulances that sit in our firehouse, often and usually, they're one in there every day and almost every time of the day, are getting that early response time as well. So their response times for our city are faster because of our dispatch center assigning our folks a call. I can speak as a subject matter expert in what you hired me to do, but I understand the efforts in cutting and saving money, I fully did that. I don't think the bank is where, you know, the cost of that is here, it's not like the banks aren't worth a buck. But obviously, that's a constant decision at some point.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, I'm trying someone I prefer, I do have a couple of questions, you might not have the answers for these, and that's fine, you can touch base with me later. Do you know how many hours our police officers are actually on the road patrolling versus like at their desk? Do you have a ratio or no?
That would probably take me more of my time to try and flesh that out. I can tell you, if I see them at the desk, I'm on their case, about what do you got, what are you working on, march on the road. But if that's call volume goes up, you spend a little bit more time at the desk, right? And that's another reason why you need a cop or two every now and then, so that you can keep folks on the road and still take the call volume. Do you have the exact number? I can say, no, but I can tell you, I am very proactive in hit the road, I don't want you wasting time with, get your shift turnover, get your stuff, get your gear, get on the road. And no one demonstrates that way to myself, so they don't have, they, there's not much of an argument for them to make on slapping around in the office.
So you said there's three to four police officers on a shift, you have, would like seven on yours?
I would like five.
Is there a reason yours is so low?
No, there's not, but if you look at the whole numbers, it's 21-ish, you know, plus the, plus command staff. We have more than that, we have three ships there, we also have a few detectives, we have command staff, you know, we have our training officer. But so three was our minimal staffing levels had been, and since the history, I don't remember it ever being lower, we worked with two often. When there's three on, one has to transport or take an emergency detention to somewhere across town. When there's three on, one has to transport or take an emergency detention to somewhere across town, it's not if you want.
Typically, police operate alone versus firemen.
Or together, I get that. I would say like, would you like more than three? What makes you feel good?
So oftentimes, to, to, to more accurately answer your question, usually, if it's certain daylight hours, myself, I'm here, CID's here, you know, we have extra coverage, it's here. On the road is typically three to four officers every night, and our sergeants are very good at this, and they know that I'll, I'll quiz them and then pop in from time to time. I was in here Sunday, and I was in here yesterday. That's not required. I'm an executive lawyer as well, but I feel compelled to pop in here, make breakfast for our team from time to time, and let them know that I can walk in any minute. You'd better not be in here jacking around and, and not bringing our citizens back in. But our sergeants know that too, and so they're very, they're very pointed at two in, two out, or four on. Somebody stayed on the road. So there's, there's always an officer that's ready to respond from a mobile position to streamline response times.
All right. Do you have a number, like, other cities have a ratio, how many police officers to residents? Do you have one of those number, like, one point eight police officers to a thousand?
Funny that you asked that, because I did my certified publics manager two-year designation. I graduated last May at Texas State University on that. CM Turner has kind of started for our city, and that, that I started before I got here, but I was fortunate to have a, a city manager that encouraged me to see it through the vision. And I did my, um, my, what do you call your end thing, your?
Dissertation.
Your practical thing, you say, yes, the one to say, your, your final project, I did it on just that staffing levels. And, and, and here's what I found after doing tons of research. There is no one exact model. It's what your citizens' expectations are. FBI estimates one per thousand, right? That puts us at about twenty-two cops. I'm telling you, we couldn't police that way.
Yeah.
We absolutely couldn't do it. We got response times would go to ten and fifteen, twenty, thirty minutes probably, and calls would be, or, excuse me, arrests and things would be getting dropped, dismissed at a more alarming rate because we couldn't get the, meet the requirements on the timelines. So that is not practical for a city our size with the citizen expectations that we have. It's loosely based on that. Here's what my premise was. People move to suburbs because they'll say this. When I call for a cop or a police officer, excuse me, firefighter or, or a police officer, one comes to my door, one shows up. Operating under that premise is what are our tolerations, right? Some folks are okay with San Antonio's twelve, fifteen, forty, fifty minute response time. The twelve and fifteen was an emergency response time. The other ones are your average response time on a non-emergency call. I know that we're not okay with that. So, so yeah, we try to push for sub-five minute response times and keep us well ahead of the, of the, of the norm and the average, because our citizens deserve that average.
I'm almost done, sorry. Do you have, a lot of the residents sent, they're concerned about, I got a slew of emails, concerned about the increased amount of homelessness in our area. I know we've lightly talked about it before. Do you have a plan for this? Are you guys concerned about this? Like, obviously, it's a nationwide problem, but it does seem like it's coming home, reaching home, and I think that concerns, like you said, people who expect short time calls. We're a little bit more sensitive doing when there's only two or three as opposed to other places that are okay with fifteen, twenty.
So, very lonely question, and I'll start with this. Austin's done us no favors.
Yeah.
No favors, right? Because it's a mecca, and it's only fifty miles up the roadway, so that mecca broadens, it gets further and further, then we become the extended mecca for homelessness. Because of their loose and, and, you know, they just passed a count, a city ordinance last year, that they said was tough on, tough on homelessness and transy. It's ridiculous. You get a chance, it does literally nothing. It gives no teeth to the officer doing anything. Your city, yeah, it's horrible, Councilman Buck. I'll tell you this, our homelessness right now is at an all-time low, because I just reached out to a personal friend, it was Daddy Litzer, Sheriff's Javier Salazar, and said, you got a camp down here on mecca, right? Says Aztec, Aztec Drive, I know my street's here, I brought, Aztec Drive, it's not even our street, it's Fair County's. But we noticed a tent city down there. There was about sixty tents. Wasn't our city, but it was, they were coming into our city in shirts and flying signs. I said, come clean up your stuff, please, buddy. Your dad is tired, seeing it so hot. And, I'm sure he did for his dad. No, he did, he did, that same weekend. He called me, and I happened to be up here, and I had been down there, and I saw their, their trucks down there. They, they moved that camp on. We've never been at a more lower time. That does not mean that they are, they're not here. We still have our fair share, but we're at an all-time low. And so we're, we're constantly keeping our, our finger on the, on the pulse of that thing. We are looking at some ordinance stuff that Leon Valley has just passed, so I'm waiting to get that from chief, but it's also there to take a look at that. They had some stuff about camping and hanging out on sidewalks that I thought was pretty creative, and it's something that we can incorporate. So we're always looking to, one, there, 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 a demand on our resources, right? Because they're often our, our emergency detainees, detainees, drug abuse, you know, they, they, they destroy the parks and, and stuff that public works has to go in there, they fix all the time, in the bathrooms, asleep in the bathrooms. So it is, it's a nuisance, certainly is, in the library, they're open there with some regularity, but it's at an all-time low.
I have one more question for you, and one for please, then I'm done, sorry. Okay, your response time, you said four minutes, five minutes. Is it taking you longer to get to certain areas like Orchard Park now that we've expanded? Are those calls taking more than that five minutes? Are we looking at more? I know, I know shirts and them are coming too, but I'm just wondering, like, is that an issue yet?
No, it's not yet because the call volume hasn't been enough to, to statistically change our, we get enough elsewhere that we're still responding quite fast. And our officers are open there with some regularity. They're not, it's not on an island. We go over there, we're open there with some regularity.
I pulled the numbers on that too, and ours is a six minute response time.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
That's coming down, you see Boulevard, it's a highway.
Right, the long way around.
It is the long way around.
But where we are in the process, if you have.
Of the road.
Yeah, I was just curious for now. My last question is for fire, and it was a resident asking me to ask you. So what does our ISO rating require for staffing?
For staffing? So I would have to actually look at what that number is, and I'm not really sure. I don't think that I identify staffing.
Okay.
So what our ISO rating is, we're an ISO of two, and, and basically, that rating is basically comprised of dispatch times and our higher locations and our, our equipment that we have on hand, which is our primary.
Yeah, right.
If we wanted a better rating, would you need more staffing?
No, I, I don't think that our staffing is vaulted.
Okay.
I think it's our response and mutual rating and all those other things factor in to that number, and we've addressed the ISO rating of two versus.
And ISO rating is not solely on fire, is it?
Water system.
It's our water system, it's our dispatch.
Co-compliance, how many co-compliance offices, how we go.
Okay.
So it's not just that. Form compliance and just.
Our staffing really relies on NFPA and what that national standard is. And that is, obviously, NFPA states that for every two firemen that are inside the home, we have to have two firefighters outside, ready, in here, breathing air, to go in and inform that resident.
Thank you both for your time, sorry.
Real quick, eleven years as a, as an administrator, now twenty-plus as a, as a police officer, eleven as an administrator, and I've had eight city managers in that timeframe. And I wanna tell you from the top down, this, this place is as good as it gets. I've seen other agencies inside and out, and it's not let service, that's a fact. We have some of the best team members and, and folks here that work towards a common goal, and that's, that's the service for us.
You're counting, pretty cool, too.
You know, I, I urge you guys to come out. Chris Keenan was fortunate enough to see the group of guys that we have here, and they're all, and I've never worked with a better and more amazing group of people.
I'll make the pitch for Public Safety Week, which is our opening day for the campaign. If you really want to.
Right before additional.
If you really wanna see your police and fire reaching out, being interactive with the community, that's the place to see.
Listen, we're open, just clear for the city manager, turn her, and, and by all means, if you wanna visit, we're happy to do it.
I'd also recommend, just for pitching events too, which also plays into a lot of things in our community.
No, miss.
That, it's not unusual to see some of our newer police and fire people doing patrol during the movie night. They're not there to make anyone's sake. They're there just to be seen in the community, and touch base with the kids, and the adults that are there, because we want them to see us as their friends, not as their parents.
Thank you. I hope we answered all your questions.
Fantastic presentation, guys. You're not, you're not too enthusiastic about what you're doing.
No, I'm married, there's no doubt about it. I love, I love, you don't work a day in your life if you like what you're doing. I was an IT analyst right before nine eleven, you've heard my story. For those of you that haven't, I'll keep it real brief. I know you're waiting.
I'm sorry, I recorded somewhere.
She's celebrating, we're crying like everybody else. And I turned to her and said, go back to the military, say, what's it gonna be? She told me instantly, she was like, she still does, what I'm gonna do. And I joined the police academy. I went from eighty thousand a year to twenty-nine thousand dollars a year, right here, two thousand a year. I don't look back. I make a little bit more on that now, and thank God, I wasn't making instantly, but I'm gonna like what you do, if you don't work a day in your life.
That's absolutely true.
One last quick comment. As I said, I'm in location, God bless both of you and your team and everything that you guys are doing. So thank you very much for the services you're providing.
Thank you for all your support.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation.
Yeah, we'll see you help in budget time.
All right.
Apologies to Stephen and Nolan, wow, I couldn't have been at the end of the presentation. So, you know, we've been talking about a lot of projects going on in the city, and one of them is the Kitty Hawk thoroughfare. We made mention of it when we've been talking about a reunion project and that there was a lot of work that we've been done on that. And so what I asked them to do, to come this evening and actually talk a little bit more about where we are in that project, and the things that we've completed and where we're at. And then also wanna discuss preliminary, probably, estimated cost of construction. I don't know why we call that. So that county has an idea of, you know, what our obligations are in terms of providing for that area in terms of not distracting, well, we can get on the trail and stuff, so.
Actually, thinking around, guys.
No problem. My name is Councilman, like Kim mentioned, my name is Stephen Daniel. We work with Ken and Warren, and a couple of years ago, Ray reached back out, reached out to us to start looking at this particular property, because Ken Warren was the engineer that worked with Walmart to bring the Walmart in back about ten years ago. And so, since then, Nolan Pierce has joined my team, and he's been instrumental in helping, helping coordinate the layout, some of the designs, specifically around about that, that would kind of be into. So I want you both to get up here and speak to it, and, and answer the questions y'all might have, so. Just real quick, quick agenda. I think most everybody knows the location, but we'll just quickly show a screenshot on that. Get to some of the background history, what we look at, in terms of the conceptual planning early on, and as we've gotten to the design of the, of the actual thoroughfare. And their Kitty Hawk, dive into their proposed improvements, progress to date, cost as Kim mentioned for the Kitty Hawk component that ties into Kitty Hawk, and it gives us some questions that y'all might have at the end. Location, just down the road from here, squeezed in between the Walmart and St. Matthews Church. I know this is kind of hard to see, we've got some more graphics out, that will show later in the slide, but the, the component that we're referring to Kitty Hawk, the Kitty Hawk thoroughfare ties into Kitty Hawk, and extends about a thousand feet to the south. So we've mentioned some of the history that we had. First, first step we did, looking at planning, say, when Ray reached out, was, I'm pretty sure that this plan was potentially developable. We, we ran a few scenarios for different development options, which developed traffic projections to, but first and foremost, determining, depending on what, what may or may not come in, determining the size of the roadway, that would be the equipment. So more or less a capacity study, and that would help develop what we would call a typical section, how many lanes we have, you know, bike lanes, sidewalks, and so forth, and what our ultimate right-of-way footprint would be. And so, again, we completed the traffic study, came up with a few different options, and each one of those options yielded the same section. What we're showing is, is two lanes, one lane in each direction, a center turn lane with, with bike lanes and sidewalks. I got in here, again, I know this is a little, little tight to see, we do, obviously, have proposed around about there in the center where, where we meet up with Walmart driveway. Initially, that, that was not necessarily the plan, to develop that roundabout. We were going to do more of a test curve through there, through there, that ties into Kitty Hawk. But in doing so, that would impact the conservation, these were a couple of steps, for stringing that parallel to Walmart property. Where that, prior to that Walmart, you'll be installed, there's that string ran through that parcel. They granted with Army Corps of Engineers, when they relocated that, that string, where it had to be put into the conservation. And so, as we started, when, when we started doing the conceptual, really layouts, the alignment, the required curvatures that we would need based on the speed of the vehicles. And we were working hand in hand, project manager from the Corps, and then sat down, showed them what we had, and then, after going, going into, into depth a little bit, they, they basically kind of shot us down and said, can't touch that even if it's more or less inappropriate. So from there, we kind of had to take a step back and, and look at, okay, how, how do we wanna make this work? One of the big goals of that project is that parcel that's up closest to Kitty Hawk, between the church and Walmart, we want it to maintain a certain size parcel, so it can still be developed. And so, but one of the thoughts that that would, that would brought to them was roundabout, roundabout, it, it reduces the speed. I know it's, it's not going currently in the city, so I thought it would obviously be a little confusing part of it, but, it, you know, it was one of the big, the benefits of it, it does serve as a traffic calming effect, where it was so speeds into it. And so, so as we worked through it, that, that was kind of the concept behind bringing that, bringing that curve in. So, again, what, so the overall exhibit, what you see where it's, it brings us a developable area that the city's coordinating with. And then, there's a, a footprint for that conceptual layout, and I mentioned, and apologize if, it's kind of hard to see, but the thoroughfare starts at Kitty Hawk, and it, of course, you, you see the network through there. The design probably doesn't get into the cost a little bit later, so it's about a thousand feet from Kitty Hawk, and then the rest of it, that's conceptual level, that could, that, that, some of the alignment could change based on, based on what the developer proposes to the city. And so, but again, those connections, it's six zero four, University City Boulevard and the Burke Boulevard as well. And lastly, with, with some of the history, we've been coordinating back and forth with Walmart, and we, we do have a close-up of, of the impacts, which we are, with the, with the roundabout being installed. We are impacting thirteen of their parking spaces, and when they coordinated their design with the, with the city during the class approval process, they recommend a number of parking spaces per square foot. So one of the, I wouldn't say necessary requirements, but one of the things that they asked us for was, we want to maintain that minimum. So if you're impacting thirteen spaces, we'd like to see thirteen spaces go back in. So, right now, we, we had, we actually had a very good meeting with them last week, talking about it there, their onboard, that they obviously recognize the benefit to the store, like, what they develop, develop that, that, that is looking to go in. And so, hopefully, that, that process is ongoing, and the next step with them is, is to start talking about even more of a, as well, so.
I'm gonna turn it over to Nolan to talk about some of their improvements.
Yeah.
So there's some zoomed-in images here, kind of talking about some of the components. So this is that first out, this is what we're talking about. The orientation is a little bit, so you can see a little better, but we're looking at the connect to Kitty Hawk, where the existing entrance that connects to the Walmart. Converting, widening that section to reduce turn lanes, obviously, the roundabout intersection there, and then, as it turns to the south, future, future layout there, that will be standard development. So, part of these improvements include asphalt tables with concrete ceramic cutter, we're introducing a service order system to take out the runoff for all side drainage, and of course, the roadway itself. We're gonna have include sidewalks with ADA ramps, around the roundabout and connect with Kitty Hawk, and future development. It's part of this because we are introducing turn lanes at the intersection of Kitty Hawk. We've got to modify that signal. We've got to do a couple of signal poles, and a new mast arms, and new equipment, sort of that intersection where. And then also, because we're up against this conservation, like Stephen mentioned, we've got some constraints with how the grading works, and how we can put, put in an actual layout of the roadway in. So we're gonna have a very large example to hold up the roadway, and those components also include railing and things like that for pedestrians walking, walking through there. Also, sign David markings, it's really important for a roundabout to have clear, concise signage to help the folks, especially that's new to them, and that's always a learning curve for new people with roundabouts. At times, you know, it can be a little daunting, but with research and, and things that we've done in other communities, we're gonna get a point for that. And then also, also some illumination, so shoot light, it's also important at a roundabout, be able to see around the circulating lanes, and also, you know, we continue to build out the corridor. And then, we're looking at landscaping irrigation for the center of the roundabout, so there's a, kind of a red shading, it's like a truck, a trucker trucks built to, to move through the intersection and not block. But there's an opportunity for the middle of the roundabout, which we've ever seen, one of the communities where we can do some, it's nice to do the landscaping and just creation for that. As part of the project, we also have some improvements to make along Kitty Hawk, so we're, we're doing some alterations to the raised median. So this is between the existing signal work that we can talk to versus Walmart. So because of the new roadway coming in, we're gonna need more capacity at that intersection, so we need to expand that left turn lane. And, and also reconfiguring and closing off some of the openings to allow for that room for those turn lanes for the traffic to go in. turn lanes for the traffic to be efficient. And then also, you get some increased safety with controlling access anytime you eliminate, you know, turning movements and complays. And then here's a zoomed-in view of the bottom left corner of the turning movements and how we're gonna have to reconfigure the Walmart parking lot. So, we're making sure the turning movements, vehicles can get in and out of that parking lot with a revised drive aisle. And like Stephen mentioned, that's thirteen spots that are impacted there. And we're working closely with them on converting that driveway, making sure we have the space there in construction to do those improvements. And then, bigger zoomed-out view, making it hard to see, but we're looking to add those parking spots on the Universal Boulevard side of Walmart's parking lot. And so, adding those parking spots in those corners. And then also, a part of this, we're looking at utilities. There's a sanitary sewer, twelve-inch, or sorry, existing line that we're upgrading to a twelve-inch. It's a separate project that Randy and I brought to y'all and discussed, but it does go through our improvements. So, we're keeping those improvements in mind as we design our form grain and other elements of the roadway. And then included in our project as well, when we're doing the new roadway design and installing that, we're also including waterline improvements as well. So, those can come in at the same time, you don't have to rip the roadway out of the back.
Right. And that's, like, the other one thing we talked about last time, I said, you know, the utility coordination, that now that there's gonna be developments in, not only with water, but here, but we also want to engage, you know, there's gas, there's communications, you know, we want that to happen now, instead of science-based work now. So, as Nolan mentioned, they don't come in after the fact, we're gonna brand the pavement. So, that's part of the important assets on, that's ongoing right now. So, and then again, if the other, some of the other legs will develop, you know, coordination between city and developer in terms of who provides that, that'll be involved. So, in progress date, we did the planning stage, we, you know, this has been doing a couple of years thus far. I mentioned that working with the Army Corps of Engineers, we went down an area, you know, an alignment with it that we thought was, you know, talking to one of their project managers was reasonable and we're doing that, you know, they, I wouldn't say they're a curveball, but they basically said, can't touch that stuff. So, so again, there's, there was probably a little bit of delay, but, but again, completed the planning stage in twenty-one, started doing the data collection last year. We had conceptual designs and then what we would call thirty percent, it's, you know, all of your, you know, pretty line work with, with limited, you know, further blue design to kind of show, yes, this is what it looks like, this works. And then from there, we did take a little bit of break because at that point, the city had, we put out our P with the developer and we wanted that some of those, some of those items needed to transpire. So, we didn't get too far down the road with the developer, tried, you know, wanted to change something that was more beneficial to their site. And we ended up having to redesign much of stuff. So...
He's talking about this reunion project coming from the auto.
Right. And then again, developing, but we still continue that development, we still kept in touch with Walmart and that was, you know, that's been a little bit of a challenge today, they're very involved with it, but, you know, it hasn't taken time to get them on the phone. But again, the last meeting we had, we think the staff seemed very positive. And so, we're, so we are looking forward to that. And then again, we started the sanitary sewer, the component we're part of is rehabilitation. And then, we also have the Walmart, the sixteen oh four, to put in, to put in this annual rehabilitation under funding there, under the roadway. So, we're actually relocating that. So, that started in the spring of this year. Those probably sort of, they're intertwined, but the timeline has been more or less shortened significantly. So, so here's one on internal costs. So, we broke this down, so this is just, this is the component for the Kitty Hawk Thoroughfare, the more or less a thousand feet stretch. And then we broke this down to kind of outline what, you know, what each item is. So, roadway drainage, signal modification, retaining oil, that retaining oil is something that, that you, on this type of project, we typically don't, because of costs that we typically don't have, but because of the grading challenge that we have at that year, we are having to design a retainment that is going to retain that, that's a decent amount of soil. So, so that is an added cost. The waterline, that's in there, and that's the, you know, the ultimate development, that will become a component of the system that Randy operates. Illumination, that's the lighting, landscaping, irrigation, we have a relatively small amount. And we do have a, you know, more of a thirty percent contingency added in there, just because of the unknowns. Again, you know, with this being still tied to development, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, we try to provide a bigger picture number to where we don't make sense of that. So, so again, of course, all that rolls up to provide that whole line. So, but, you know, just this is for, for that section that ties into Kitty Hawk, the median improvements as well, the access improvements will be into the draft of what we have. That's it. That's what we have here.
Okay.
Roll a couple of questions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, first off, the thirty percent contingency, is that typical on a roadway project?
It is at this stage. And so, industry standard, we used to kind of pull that back a little bit. So, conceptual level stage was thirty percent, and we did develop thirty percent plans. So, we dropped that down to twenty-five or twenty, the level of comfortableness that we have. With the higher inflation cost and kind of the unknowns, we want to kind of set expectations a little bit better with budget. And so, we're still trying to do thirty percent. So, what will we do for the next stage in seventy percent design? That will start the draft right now. And we're getting closer to construction.
Yeah, okay. I'm not gonna, anyway, it's like, the, on Kitty Hawk, you're closing off access to the other side of the waterline, this is the funeral home of the church right there. It looks like you're shutting down the majority of the access that points there to be able to cross.
So, yes, they have the opening there, all of this is my market's privacy, but we are introducing a hooded left turn lane, which is in the middle, right in the middle of the median improvement. So, they will still have access into the funeral home. You know, I know that, you know, such things that happen in the long field. You know, exit is an important component in that, but they usually have traffic control and things like that, and they can U-turn and have a certain intersection.
And the people possessions, by the way, always go out towards Central Four, they go past the city.
And then outside that intersection, like, you go through the multi-use agreement with the church.
That's the key, can you raise?
Yeah, well, you can, I mean, you can still get in, but you're, you're, you're only getting in through the light.
But you can't get in where we used to be only getting in?
Yeah, from this side. So, from up there, you can't get out and head this way. You're gonna have to put out the light to go out actually.
But like Randy said, they have a joint use agreement with the church where they can still use their parking lot to use the signal to the left.
And left, you won't be able to go left on Quail anymore?
Correct.
Is that the only street that's gonna be impacted with the left, or is there another street?
No. Quail, to make a left turn on the Quail would be close.
Okay.
Do you know, go up in the next intersection, drive Kitty Hawk, where you know that Quail is really close to the Central Four?
Oh, absolutely.
To the Boulevard. And if you're gonna turn to go left on Quail, you're actually really behind people, waiting to turn left, then you see Boulevard. And since the Quail Street goes through, you see Boulevard and then you turn left and then you back on Quail anyway. So, yeah, it won't have much of an impact on the traffic.
So, what I'm gonna really ask y'all for is the backup of the safety for the requirements of that, of shutting down the left turns out of the funeral home. I'm gonna ask you to really give me the backup on that, because I've got about three hundred and eight people that are gonna be upset. So, I just need you to...
Do you have three hundred and eight people at the funeral home?
At the church.
At the church. It's church that's affected.
The church there is affected.
So, a big part of it too is, you know, the capacity for that left turn on the long to the thoroughfare. So, part of it is if you leave that opening, you know, you're gonna be conflicting with queuing. So, if people at that signal will queue into the through lane, then they won't be able to get out anyhow.
I get it. I just need you to prove it.
Sure.
What are you worried about? The church making the left turn out of there? Because that's the only way they can get out of there, to turn left.
You can turn left at the light or you can turn left at the funeral.
Most of us use the funeral home because it's faster than waiting the light. And at the church, there's not enough parking to line up. Like, if you're, that parking lot is really small, so it's really weird. So, if you're at the light, it's super awkward. Like, you can't line up cars that way. So, a lot of us go to the church parking lot and take left out and then head home as opposed to using light, because it just logically makes more sense, because you can't line up in that parking, there's not enough room in that parking lot, the way it's designed to line people up to get out. It's just not feasible.
Mayor, I guess I'm not following you, because you're talking about when you're leaving the funeral home.
Well, this, this one right here.
Yes.
You leave this, a lot of people, when they leave, they go out and go down this one. And I get it, what he's saying is I need the stacking depth because of the traffic that's here. So, I'm just, I'm telling you what the, what the issues are with the people at the church.
No, we, we, that's, you know, determining the length of that, that was, you know, that came from the queuing ones, like the second one, so that, oh yeah. But then we did, I know, we looked at this quite a bit, you know, like, we did provide that what we call a hooded left for the next driveway, so that people can turn in. But it's like you said, the left turn access now will have to go when you see that little traffic right there.
Okay. Because it does get very congested in the church parking lot. Try and hit that one light to turn left, because there could be a majority, there's a huge amount of people on this side.
And then once that develops, once we put in the full thoroughfare that connects to the access road on six zero four and you see Boulevard, that is gonna be another busy section as well.
Sure.
Coming to that light.
I was just curious to...
And part of the design with the signal modification, we look if they use any timing and things like that. So, there's a big demand in some mornings, some evenings, certain times. That's something that can be programmed and looked at and changed.
Ah, geez, tell us what Randy's likes. He just got programmed with Texas, now we gotta go to the church, then. Okay, I'm telling you my woes and letting you know that if you can think of a genius engineering solution, I would love to hear it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Can you tell us, again, how far that four point one million goes? Like, how far into the development do we get for that? Is it just to Walmart, or does it...
Right. Everything seems true. So, if we look at it, it's about, no.
It does also, the Walmart, the Walmart component is not significant, but it also includes the relocation, place to park, places to park, that's as well.
Okay.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. Okay, our next letter, next letter from CD is we're gonna go into a code session pursuant to Texas government code section five five two one oh seven two regarding the purchase and value of real property. Kilberis, an open session we have, a federal effect on the position of the corporation and negotiate to a third party and for attorney consultation pursuant to five nine one oh seventy one two regarding carpet between five hundred and eighty blocks of Kitty Hawk Road. So, we'll go ahead and break off now into our close session. On D S capacity.
It's now ten, eleven.
I don't want, and there'll be no action. I mean, some of the things I wanted, I mean, I think a lot of them are down.
Let me just, I'm gonna go over to the record just to fill the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four unexpired term.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, we have an ending.
It's okay, no problem.
Oh, it's gone anyways. Well, sorry, short. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Neville was not re-elected to city council per our articles in incorporation. That means he automatically ceases to be a director for the EDC and that position became vacant. Councilmember Goolsby and Councilmember Fitzpatrick also serve on the EDC. Our bylaws allow up to four councilmembers to serve. Because Mr. Neville's seat had a vacancy, they did make recommendation at their last EDC meeting to go ahead and reappoint him for his unexpired term. So, his term will expire at the same time all the other board members do in twenty twenty-four. And they also agreed to keep him on the edge of treasure. That is a recommendation from EDC, but that decision will have to be ratified by council.
Forget me.
Second.
Reverend, second back.
Oldman.
Oldman. It's late.
It is late.
It is late. And, and you have the discussion, anybody? All right, good. Then I can call for the flip.
Uh, Councilmember Vaughn.
Aye.
Councilmember Gorman.
Aye.
Mayor Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Buck.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Jarrett.
Aye.
Concludes our business session. Please, city manager, if you guys have comments, ma'am?
Uh, I'm sorry, no, thank you.
All right, let's start with Mr. Bruns.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Attended this flash show on Saturday, it was a success. Had a great time. Thank you to Regina and the entire staff who put that together. Randy and your guys out there are spectacular. I asked for support from three of my fellow council members in adding an item to the agenda for the next city council meeting. I've spoken about it several times, and it's the venue tax reallocation. To be clear, I separated the golf course from the venue tax. I love the golf course, I attend the events, sponsor them, want them to be successful. However, back in two thousand and two, when the residents of Universal City were asked to approve the designation of a quarter percent sales tax, sorry, a half cent of sales tax to go towards the venue, it was specifically marketed as being designed to repay the bonds that were issued to fund the creation of the golf course and event center. It did contain language that it is to repay those bonds as well as fund the operations of the golf course. However, the primary purpose of designation of that venue tax was initially to repay the bonds. So, now, two thousand and twenty-three, we've made the final de-feasing payment on those bonds, correct? So, before we continue to use that half-cent sales tax as a venue tax, the original designation had been fulfilled its original purpose, I would like to ask the residents on the May, on the November of two thousand and twenty-three ballot, for their permission to reallocate some or all of that venue tax to something else. I understand that this may be a difficult concept or a difficult idea for some to support, and I understand that. If we vote on this at a coming city council meeting and it's voted down, I will not be hurt by this, okay? But I want to have the discussion. I want to have the discussion. And I would like to have a vote on whether or not city council will ask the residents of Universal City to re-designate a portion of that tax to something else. So, I would ask at this point for three of my, at least three of my fellow council members to join me in supporting having that discussion and then voting on whether to add it to the agenda for the next city council meeting.
All right. You want, you want a discussion?
I want a discussion, a discussion and a vote. I want this to be binding to make a decision on whether to add it to the ballot in November of two thousand and twenty-three, requesting permission from the residents to reallocate some or all of the venue tax to something else, to be decided by city council. That ballot language will be decided, how are we going to reallocate it? And then, giving direction to the city manager and her staff to draft that language and notify our county that we wish to put that, that it should be placed on the ballot for November of two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay.
Well, no, this is not a discussion happening.
It's not a, it's not a discussion. I just want to, I just want to, it is added to the, to the agenda so that we can discuss it and take a vote on it. And if it's a four two, five one, whatever it turns out to be, so be it. I just want to have the vote and be able to discuss it. Can I have the support from three of my council members?
I have a number. I'd like some clarification. Clarification, okay. And only, you know, before I, I vote...
Um, and you, and only, you know, before I, I, I vote to do that, uh, I need a clarification on the fact that we're, we already in the process of having workshops on this? That, that is scheduled for more workshops. Before that, was that, was that still going? And you, you, so, so my, my, my question here would be, you're asking to forego any of that and just jump forward with that?
No, sir. What I'm asking for is that about approximately eight weeks ago, we had a workshop. We've just been discussing this since at least February. When we got the notification that the final defeasing payment was gonna be made for those bonds. We've requested it and the city count, the city manager has told me that she's getting some conflicting guidance. She needs to, she needs some specific guidance. I asked her what we're waiting for and she told me that she's waiting for guidance from the city council.
So again, I bring it up. Are we, you're asking to forego what we were, had been discussing about having some more workshops and getting together with some, some more ideas on this? Or do, are you asking to forego those discussions and move on with this process?
What I'm trying, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, no.
What I'm trying to, what I'm trying to do is get this done before the budget season comes up. The deadline to notify Bear County of our intent to place this on the ballot is August twenty-eighth, August twenty-first. We're about to get right into budget season where we're already gonna have a lot of long meetings, a lot of long discussions, crunching numbers, stuff like that. I would like to try to, and, and it's August twen, August twenty-first, it's right in the heat of that, uh, in terms of trying to discuss the budget. And when I, when I've asked, I've not gotten a clear answer on what the statuses of this and Ms. Turner has told me that she's waiting on guidance from the city council.
Well, I'm not getting a clear answer right now either as far as, again, you're, you're asking, what, what you're asking is to forego what we're talking about, doing the workshops and bringing this right to, uh, bringing this, uh, for basically a vote, not just a discussion at this point.
Are you trying to say you need more information? Like before you could vote, you're saying you would need more discussion about the golf course?
I wanna know if he's, he's asking to forego the workshops we're talking about having on this particular issue.
Doesn't feel like he has nothing for me.
There, there, there are no, there are no, um, are there any workshops currently scheduled regarding reallocation of venue tax? There are none at all.
We were, have been talking about having workshops.
You're right.
So I would be, I'll, so I'll, I'll make mine, I'm in favor of scheduling a workshop and getting down and very with issue and let's, and let's get it out there and, and work on it so we can make sure we make the timeline. But I personally would not be, uh, ready to put that out.
Here's what I think, uh, the disconnect is, is when we had that workshop, one, one council person had an idea of what, what to do. Another, another one had another thought, but it was never a consensus of everybody that this is. So I think what Ms. Turner is saying is no one is, no, even council was not, was not, was not united on totally on what they want.
Correct. Okay. So, so I, so I wish, I wish to make a decision one way or the other. That's why I seek input and, and support from three of my fellow council members to add this definitively to the agenda. Barring any one of us, I believe adding it to a future agenda, it will not get added to a future agenda.
I would like to add a workshop, basically a workshop to know what we want to put on the agenda as far as a vote, what to vote on. Because I, I think the, the idea of lea, leaving it, we're gonna vote on something. Well, Ms. Turner's got the pool. Put something down, but she doesn't know what. So we need to give her guidance as to what we want to see on that. So I think we do need one more meeting so that we give her guidance. So then, in the, and, you know, within another meeting or two, she can have that.
Then I request, then I request for two items to be added to two future agendas. At the next city council member, the discussion of how city council would like to potentially have the venue tax reallocated to something else. The immediately thereafter following council meeting to have the vote on that item that we decided upon during the workshop.
I guess I'm not sure, I think that I didn't feel like we necessarily had exhausted that it should be reallocated as of yet because there was still debt to the city that needed to come back from the bond course that they had loaned the interdepartmental. I forgive the terminology that the lawyer used, but that that was something that needed to be paid back. And so as part of the discussion that we have on that, I think we should have a plan on how that is going to be accomplished. So it doesn't impact our bond rating and all of those other things going forward. So I don't know. On reallocation yet, I'm just, I, I think we still need to talk about where is the timeline of it? Does it need to go on this November? Or wouldn't we be more judicious in pulling it back for another year to make another payment towards that and then putting on the ballot? I know you're managing towards that August twenty-first date, but I don't wanna rush the decision and regret it later.
So then I'll first of all, if you, that you can vote no.
All right, so.
If, if, if you, if, if you don't feel comfortable voting yes to place it on the ballot in November, that's okay. I said that was okay.
Yeah, you did. I just think it's premature to have, I think we need to have other discussions before we come to the vote. So maybe I would support having the discussion at council meeting.
And not, not discussion not lead to action.
Correct. Very well, then I relax down the road, but just discussion.
And there was, there was my point.
Okay, then very well, knowing, knowing that I will then request the support at, if we do this in two weeks, whatever it is, I, I think our next one is the fifth of July. We, I will, I want to have the discussion about reallocation of the venue tax. Then at the immediately fol, thereafter following city council meeting, that we will put it up for a vote.
I think when the, when you have a discussion, that, that has, that would have to be something that came out of the discussion.
Because if you put it up for immediate, if, because I can't tell you that the, the staff is going to have, in two weeks is gonna give staff plenty of time to put together what we're, what we're going to ask of them. You're putting a, a binding date on it within one of the subsequent X numbers. I think would be, will, will get you a lot harder.
At a council meeting prior to the deadline of notifications of Bear County that we will hold a vote.
I agree with you.
Okay, okay. So at the next.
Again, if there's this determination that, that we wanna go forward with the.
Very well. So at the next city council meeting, that we will have a discussion about reallocation of the venue tax.
If that.
That's just putting it out as an agenda and that's.
Very well. Knowing then that I will ask for your support at that meeting or at a future meeting to place it on, to, to then call for a vote. Very well.
But not at, not at the discussion.
Not at the discussion meeting. I, 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 I understand, I understand your discomfort. I understand your discomfort. I'm willing to negotiate on this. On the. No, no, what I mean is I'm not gonna say if you support me or you don't support me. Okay, I'm, 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 I'm certainly willing to negotiate on this, but I wanna make sure that there is forward progress on this. Towards having, towards having the discussion and then having a vote at a council member, at a council meeting with, that will meet and convene at with sufficient time to provide the requisite notification to Bear County of placing it on the ballot if we so decide.
For, for.
I'm asking for future commitment from this council.
I'm not.
Okay.
No, I am not.
We're not, no future commitment.
No future commitment.
Here. It's just asking for an agenda.
Yes, I'm not, so.
There you go. Okay.
At this point, a discussion at the next city council.
All these pictures dumps in a row, so you know what to ask.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have. Mayor.
I'm good. Thank you, sir.
All right, so a lady came up and spoke today about, um, the weeds at Capano Ridge. She also sends an email out to all of you. Um, I drove out there personally and like they are like literally up chest high. I realize that we don't have. Um, she's tried to work with him. She's tried to contact him. She's given him a price. She said, we'll mow it. Will you help pay part of the price? They were even willing to negotiate. The land developer is not interested at all in working with her. So she's asking council to help her out. And so my question is, is can we have an agenda item regarding the ordinance that talks about those weeds and how long that unincorporated or whatever? I know we have rules that it can be whatever it wants to be, but is it something that we can actually look at? And decide as a council that maybe it needs to be at two feet, not five feet, cause that does seem a bit ridiculous. And they're very amenable to having it at, you know, even if it's a foot high or two feet high, but like it's literally five feet. Like I'm five foot six and it's up to here on me. So is there a way that we could possibly put that on the agenda to discuss that ordinance and possibly work with this?
Um, yeah, I think you can bring me around my wish, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Thompson has stayed. So when I sent the information back out to all of you, the agreements on it, I also wanted Carter copy the owner of that property because his name and phone number were within those documents and I anticipated that he was going to be getting a call. So I did get an email back from him. It says, uh, Kim, thank you for this information. I'd like to respond to Miss Thomas's comments below. Last October seventh at eleven AM, I met Miss Thompson at the property. We discussed the situation and acknowledged that I was violating no city codes and that the HOA had the responsibility for maintaining the twenty-five foot strip adjacent to subdivision. However, in the spirit of cooperation, I asked Miss Thomas to find out from the HOA landscape contractor how much it would cost to mow my lots, what he was already on site to mow the drainage and landscape areas currently maintained by the HOA. Miss Thompson said she would get back to me with the information, but I've never heard back from her. I have not been contacted by her since that meeting. Last year prior to the meeting, as a courtesy at my expense, I did mow the two point five acre lot in the corner of Kip Hawk and Olson Road Trail, including the twenty-five foot HOA strip. I have not mowed the other lots. Thank you, Mr. Calvert. So I, I'm wondering if there is a disconnect between, um, two property owners.
Yeah, that's not what she told me tonight. She said she did contact him. She got like three bids. She sent him over to him and he said that they should have to pay for all of them is what she said to me. I don't know.
That was the initial, I was there for those. That was the initial discussion last year, uh, at HOA and she was the new HOA president. They didn't understand that the HOA is the one that's required to maintain a twenty-foot landscaping, um, between their, the subdivision and his. And she thought it was his responsibility. Once we identified with her by plot and by the covenant for that subdivision, then she went out as a HOA president and got three bids for the HOA. He had asked that once she selected the company, if he could get a bid for his property too. So that's the part that didn't happen. So she did take care of the HOA. I just don't think she's got back with Mr. Calvert. I mean, I'll reach out to her again. We, Michael's not very lucky. Michael was the one that actually worked with Mr. Calvert last year. We felt that they had an understanding. Um, actually, I think the mayor, we did that also. Uh, I felt like they had an understanding of what each one of them were going to do and I'm not quite too sure why they brought the city back into their little private consideration that they have. I understand that the grass gets hot, but it's not like a residential lot where it's, you know, ten or twelve inches or below. City council, um, last year was the one that passed the ordinance that said on-site set or two acres or above is at the discretion of the fire marshal of whether or not the lot needs to be cut and if it is a, a fire danger. I understand that she thinks it looks ugly, but you have to remember that the people that are in the rifle division where the Capano is now, they saw that empty lot at the same height for twenty-some years. Some of them, their entire forty years or big years, they lived out there. So I understand that she thinks it looks unsightly, but we do have large swaths of land that are, do have a fire burn around them. And the property owners are maintaining them that, but they're not gonna come in all the time and mow a twenty acre lot like you would your six thousand or twelve thousand square foot residential lot. I really believe the disconnect is between Miss Thomas and Mr. Calvert.
Okay, well, I'll get back to her and, yeah, I'll, I'll see.
Get back to her tomorrow.
Okay. Cause I'm just, like I said, that's not what she said tonight. So if that's, so I'm hoping that, yeah, like, I thought that was a good agreement too, was like, even if they shared the cost, they would both have a happy, reasonable, so if that could happen, that'd be wonderful. And she said they were interested in that. He just wasn't. So maybe they can work that out and then it doesn't have to be a.
They use their landscape too. As you know, we have a park over there. They have the pool. We have the park. And our staff cuts the park so many times a year. Well, they want it, you know, highly groomed and whatever. So, uh, Randy agreed that when their contractor goes over to mow their portion of their park area, that they mow the city's portion as well. So I don't know why she was able to work it out with us, but not able to work it out with Mr. Calvert. All right, well, then I'm good then. We are still using their contractor then.
It will, that's our guy.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Cool.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, uh, it's blast test as well, as you took that from, it was, uh, it was extremely hot. And, uh, for the staff and, and everybody to stay out there and run that type of operation. It's Sam and Willie Smith here and, uh, just the, uh, beer guys. It went extremely well. And, uh, I mean, I, I had to leave early. I just, I, I couldn't take it anymore, so. But, uh, kudos to the guys that could have, or did, so. And it turned out to be great and everybody had a really good time, so.
Nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick items. I mean, thank you for, for hanging out. Randy and I went down to the parish's court this morning and I, I specifically thanked the court for the, uh, the money that we're gonna be receiving for Hillview. And, uh, it was really an opportunity for us to say we really agree. It's just a great project. We love the support that the county has been giving us over all these years. I just thought it very prudent that, that he and I could go down there, represent the city, uh, to the county and I think it was well, well received. Uh, if you had not seen Sunday's paper, terrific article here about when, when tires hits the Little Creek Trail, worries and stress fall behind. It's all about the trail prosecutors. If you haven't seen the article, you can go online and get it. How we, the conference played, really, really well written. Brandon, it was really, really, uh, good piece. And Randy's quoted it numerous times as well, so. Excellent. Thank you, guys. Okay, thanks everyone much for your great tolerance tonight and, uh, it is now ten, ten thirty-five. This meeting is now adjourned.